Come to order with a roll call.
John Hutzco.
Chris Smith.
Bob Wilbark.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
And if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on August 5th and one on August 19th. And we have a few sets of minutes to approve April 1st, and bear with me. April 1st, um, let's see, Lori, Michael, Jason, John Cutler, John Hutzco, and Craig were all here. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 1?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Bob, I think you'll say something that one?
Yes.
Okay, and the next set of minutes is April 15th. Let's see, John, John, Craig, and Jason also all here for that one. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 15th? And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And Bob abstained. And I think, if it's all right Pam, I haven't had a chance to look at May yet, so we'll hold those over till August 5th. All right, our first agenda item tonight is the public hearing for orthopedic associate site plan on Route 52. Pam, do we have everything we need to be able to open the public hearing? Okay, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Lepine with the Chazin Companies, representing the applicant orthopedic this evening. Would you like me to give a brief summary?
If you want to give us, just give us an overview of what you're proposing at the site, and then we'll ask for questions.
Orthopedic purchased the old Junction Route 52 restaurant. It was a 2.87 acre parcel. It's within the G1 zoning district. Their proposal is to demolish the existing restaurant and its associated parking, and to replace it with a new 12,000 square foot orthopedic facility. It would consist of two stories, each being 6,000 square feet in footprint. They would provide 83 parking spaces. The intent is to utilize the existing well and to utilize the existing septic in the rear. The proposal set forth requires a front yard setback in terms of the building and also for the landscape. We've appeared before the zoning board. Last week, we had a public hearing before them. Public hearing has been kept open, contingent upon this public hearing this evening. At that public hearing, there were some neighbors that came out to speak about the project. Two of the neighbors couldn't make the public hearing this evening. They didn't have an issue in particular with the septs. But what they did ask is if I can provide their comments this evening, and if I may. It was Harvey Sealy, Majori Sealy of 7 Rothel Drive, Anne Spelman of 25 Birch Drive, Pat King of 9 Rothel Drive. Two of the individuals are here this evening. They had concerns about the number of parking spaces and contributing more flooding and runoff to the residency. They've had issues with their septic in the past due to the high water table. And they indicated that they've been experiencing flooding since 1973. And they brought up the Sports Dome project that's also being proposed across the street. The zoning chairman indicated that they weren't necessarily relevant to the variances being presented that evening. We had some dialogue with the neighbors outside in terms of the drainage. It indicated that this size of project is really contributing a minimal amount to their overall watershed that flows to their Lake City. But one thing we did offer to them, because their problem isn't something that only one solution is going to solve. You know, I think it's going to be a series of measures over time. We had some back and forth dialogue about potentially reducing the size of our parking spaces. The code requires 10 by 20. Some municipalities allow 9 by 18. That's a reduction of almost 20% in impervious area parking space. So on a grand scheme of about 80 parking spaces, you're talking maybe about 2,500 to 3,000 square feet roughly of reduction in impervious area. So that's one thing that I share with the neighbors, that I said I would share with the planning board. As they indicated, Harvey and Majori Sealy couldn't be present this evening, but they asked me to read their comments into the record.
Okay. Just bear with me, I'm making a note. Shalina, we'll jump into a couple of other things, but with regard to changing the size of our minimum parking space, do we have any precedence for doing that, or would that be another? Is it the planning board's purview to change something like that that's already in code?
Well, it would require, I mean, to actually change it, it would require a zoning text amendment. It is not, I mean, 9 by 18 is certainly standard in many communities. It's a little bit tighter for the larger vehicles. But it, you know, is, it's not unheard of, and there are a number of communities that use that as their standard parking space.
So when you say zoning text amendment?
Yeah, because right now our zoning specifies that a parking space is supposed to be 10 by 20.
So this is not something that we would send an applicant to the zoning board and say, get a variance to the zoning? We'd actually have to change the zoning code?
Um, I don't know, can we get a variance for the size of a parking space? Because it was not in the zoning code, actually, isn't it in the, no, it is actually in the zoning code. It is in the zoning code, the parking space side.
Okay.
Yeah, but we also can waive parking spaces as well, why couldn't we waive the size?
I think you could deal with it under the special permit with respect to the parking. You could perhaps not only landbank some of the spaces, you could even theoretically, as long as you can show you can meet the requirements, you could make the spaces somewhat narrower to reduce the impervious surface. And use that as the tool or vehicle to get there.
So the special permit with regard to the size of the parking spaces does not have to be in the zoning code?
That allows the board to waive the requirements for parking based on the ability to landbank, based on empiric information that perhaps a site doesn't produce as much need for parking as needed. So I would think in there, the creativity of making the spaces, you could do all or part of them. Maybe they're compromising, maybe what you should do is consider some large and some narrower, so they give a...
Well, yeah, I've seen that too. Where would you eliminate impervious surface?
Well, I, there, in terms of where I would eliminate it is basically the, if you look at the pavement area from north to south.
Do you have a pointer so you can show us up on the map so that the folks that are here? Thank you, John.
Get it the other way. You're shooting yourself.
So if you look at between this space and here, we would be able to...
Just, let's orient everybody, Route 52 runs...
Route 52 is right here. Here is the first row of parking parallel to Route 52. And here is the parking in the rear of the site. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 rows of parking. So we'd be able to reduce this entire area by 12 feet in width, if you went to an 18-foot wide space.
So all the 12 feet would come off the back?
That would come off the back, and, or we could do it in the front and increase the landscape area.
I think the concern is probably the back, right?
Yeah. We, you know, either way, we can increase the landscape area in the front, kind of balance it out.
Is that really going to reduce runoff though, that their concerns are?
Actually, well, yes, because if you're reducing, is it going to reduce all their runoff? No. But I mean, trying to make an attempt to address some of their concerns, I mean, their issue is volume, not rate, from what I understand, they're getting a significant amount. So it would reduce the volume, because now you've created a situation where you're allowing runoff to actually infiltrate into the grass, as opposed to directly coming off the pavement and into your catch basins.
And what about the suggestion for land banking? How many spaces are you providing right now? And if you were going to landbank any, how many would you recommend or request to landbank?
We, we weren't necessarily seeking to landbank. I know at one of our earlier meetings, we figured we needed about 81 out of the 83 spaces that are being provided here. So if anything, it would potentially be two.
Okay. If you pull...
We could certainly do a mixture of, you know, split the difference and do 40 and 40.
Chris, let me just add...
For the width or for the length?
Both.
I'm sorry?
So where are they?
Excuse me, we're agreeing that probably a mix of sizes. And I just wasn't sure if we needed both the width and the length to vary, or whether we could say all of them could be 18 feet, but some should be 9, some should be 10, I just was trying to...
You know, if you look at like a Cadillac Escalade or a Hummer, the width of them are anywhere from 79 to 84 inches. So when you talk about a space that's 9 feet wide, that's 108 inches. So there's still some play in there.
Assuming everybody parks exactly straight?
And assuming not everybody drives either. Not many of their clientele drive either. But I'm, you know, I'm trying to respond to some comments we heard at the zoning board. And we spent about an hour with the neighbors outside afterwards, so that was, that was pretty, their major concern there. And some of them have issues with their septic because it's in the groundwater. But that's not something...
This isn't going to resolve that?
I can't mitigate that. That's not an issue related to my project.
Your septic article was raised, wasn't it?
I have a raised septic, correct.
Just a couple of other things, and then we'll see what other questions are out there. We had originally on, and I think it's the plan we were looking at before this, had, we had sidewalks all the way across the front of your property. Now it looks like they may be cutting in at the...
Correct, this is, we, the plan, I think we resubmitted. It doesn't have it, we showed it at the sketch plan. But this is the plan that we submitted for the public hearing. But what we are revising for the end of this month has the sidewalks across there. It also has a revised hydrant rotation that we just got from the fire advisory board.
Okay. So that was going to be another question, did the fire advisory board have any other changes for you?
Just the location of the hydrant.
And can you confirm with us where you're putting your refuse bin, and was that also acceptable to the FAB?
Yes.
Okay. And Brendan, from a traffic perspective, do we have everything we need? I think we were missing turning radii right on the fire truck, I think, at the last meeting?
Yeah, I think we still need the complete diagrams of the vehicle tracking diagrams.
We just received from the fire department the truck last week. So we're going to include that in our revised submission at the end of July.
Okay.
What we did show them, because we didn't have their truck, we showed them another truck that was approximately 4 feet shorter in length, but it was able to accommodate all the movements. So I'm not concerned about the proposed movements, neither was the fire advisory board either.
Even if you took 12 feet away?
Correct, it's not, because we're not going to impact the Iowis.
But that curb coming in, is that going to be impacted?
No.
In the back? That will be impacted at all?
Nope, it'll still be the same type of radius.
Question for that, Jason, or you?
Well, I just don't know how that doesn't change if you're bringing everything, if you're taking 12 feet off the back, how does that change if those parking spaces are still there?
If you keep a certain amount of parking basins to say it. Say you want to keep these as your mixture of 20 feet. You can keep this row right here as your 10 by 20s, and this doesn't change at all.
So you're still taking 12 feet off the back, or no?
Well, it depends on how you want to handle it, whether you're doing a mixture of...
So if we say, if we say shrink them all and take the 12 feet off the back, is it going to change that at all?
No, I've got plenty of room here to make this radius for a fire truck. It's not going to be an issue.
I think, Jason, just to be certain too, before, you know, they'll get the final plan approval, they'll have to demonstrate that on...
No, yeah.
To summarize the water, would I be correct in saying that the situation won't get any better, but won't get very much worse?
You are correct.
And where are you right now with your wetland disturbance?
We've submitted to the Army Corps, and we are waiting their determination on. But this is a construction notification, this is less than a tenth of an acre of disturbance.
Okay. And then Scott, I don't know if we've done any more on, and I think we've, I'm not sure if we've talked about it with with this application or not, but we've talked about having some sort of crosswalk to get folks from the other side of 52 to this side. The Sports Dome going in and things like that, if, you know, again, other plans in front of us.
Wouldn't be at this location though, it would either be up at the intersection of Rothel or down by Oitorium.
So is there a need for any kind of, like, fair share contribution as far, maybe Brendan, you'll talk about that with traffic, but I think also with pedestrian traffic as well, if we want to have that conversation, I just want to bring it out.
Yeah, I don't think we've evaluated that in totality yet in terms of a fair share contribution, but that's something that could be factored in.
Okay.
But I did, I thought the sidewalk was being extended.
It is.
Okay. And then just back on the stormwater, is there any detention on the site right now for stormwater?
We have a fire retention...
No, currently. As it exists.
There is no detention at all on the site.
Period.
There is none.
Everything that hits that surface right now runs off?
Runs right off.
So you are adding detention?
I am adding detention.
And as a percentage, how much impervious would you say you're adding?
As a percentage, I'm currently increasing over about somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,500 square feet of impervious on the entire...
That's what you're adding?
Yeah.
And how much would you say do you have now, do you recall?
I want to say about 34,000.
Okay, so you're adding about 10% impervious, and you're providing detention that didn't exist before?
Correct, in the bio-retention area.
So, so is there any increase in volume, net?
Insignificant in terms of, you know, you're talking maybe 50 to 100 cubic feet.
Throughout?
Throughout, when you consider the storage.
Throughout a duration of a storm, or something?
Yeah, when you take into consideration storage in the bio-retention area.
You said 50 cubic feet?
50 to 100 cubic feet, correct.
Okay, pretty insignificant, okay.
It also looks like where the bio-retention is, you have a catch basin that probably goes into 52, so some of the water is going to go, overflow is going to go out.
Well, currently, right now, 52 drains onto the site. There is no drainage in 52 in that area. So it's relatively, you know, it just pretty much drops right into our site, so we're capturing...
Chris, I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time here, and you can...
There is no drainage along Route 52, it sheds onto our property.
Okay.
So we are putting in some catch basins because we're running curb along Route 52 to capture that drainage now and circulate it through our property.
Okay. Brendan, anything else from a traffic perspective we should be talking about?
There was, our office did do a traffic impact study for this project. We did look at the site driveway, and we looked at the adjoining intersections of Rothel Drive and Lake Drive. Some of the things, you know, to highlight are maybe the trip generation, you know, it's a medical office building. It's not a super significant generator of traffic. But we did run an analysis on it for the AM peak and the PM peak. It did generate, in the AM, it generates 23 cars entering and 6 cars exiting. In the PM, it generates 12 cars entering and 31 cars exiting. When we looked at the analysis of those adjoining intersections, it had a very, very small impact in the magnitude of, you know, of about a second or a second and a half increase at the worst locations. So not a very significant impact to those adjoining intersections. And that was taking this as a new development. If you actually looked at, you know, the restaurant use and what that would generate, you know, mainly in the PM peak, and factor that in, and, you know, subtract it out, it'd be even less of an impact. So it's, you know, the analysis pretty much demonstrated that it doesn't have a real significant impact on the surrounding roadway network.
Any questions for Brendan from the board? Michelle, any, anything else we need to go over? Joe, anything?
We talked a little bit about the stormwater, we had some comments on that, but they seem to be fairly minor in that regard. But we'll take another look at the impervious cover and the drainage effects, what it might do if they do revise the parking. Otherwise, I think our only other significant comment was on the utilities, water and sewer. We've mentioned about if those are available from the town in the near future, that the applicant would be encouraged, I guess, to hook up to the town sewer system. And they show water from the Shenandoah line, but there would be, you know, it's currently shown cutting across 52. We're not sure the DOT is going to allow that. And the town was saying it should be an all or nothing on, you know, if they get water for fire, it should also be for domestic, so that there's not two sources out there.
Okay. So Chris, have you reviewed that?
We would love to have domestic water, it's just not available. Is what we understand, you don't have the capacity to serve our project.
Okay.
Well, I think the notice Joe alluded to would be if it becomes available in a timely fashion, that you would agree to connect.
The water, I think we would, the sewer is a separate issue because of the investment that needs to go in to build the septic system and have it operational. I think the sewer that's eventually coming down Route 52 is going to come at a later date compared to when this project's hoping to eventually be open.
Well, I guess ultimately, if you could provide a schedule, we would see, you know, whether or not we could work that out or not.
Okay.
Sewer gas.
I was going to say, wow, Scott, that was impressive.
Lori, one thing, I'm not sure if Chris mentioned in the initial presentation that the existing restaurant use had two full access driveways onto 52, and this developed and consolidated it into one access drive, which is just good access management practice, so.
Okay. And Brendan, I know there's a couple of curb cuts on the other side, does this line up with any of them, or is it at a...
It doesn't line up with that.
Okay, all right, I couldn't remember where, there's a couple of them.
Rothel and Oitorium, right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from board members? All right. So do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak for or against the orthopedic associate site plan? What we'll do is we have a sign-in sheet up here at the front table. Okay, if we've already signed in, we can call your names. Chris, yeah, what we'll do is we'll have folks come up to the podium, thank you.
Anne Spelman.
Okay, Anne?
Basically, what I wanted to reiterate was that the existing problems have to be factored into any kind of construction that's going to be in the area. The area has a high water table, easily saturated soil, poor ground runoff, and a neglected septic system. As a result, we've had, in the area, we've had contaminated groundwater, heavy down cores, flash flooding has caused major damage. So the bottom line is that with the increasing population and construction in the area, and the shrinking of ground covering surfaces by blacktopping and other things, it's vital that any decision concerning the development of this area and anything else must be put into place a safeguard that will ensure the health, safety, and welfare of our community. And that's what we are concerned with, that the runoffs and the different things will impact and cause more damage than they already have. I just heard them mention the traffic. On Rothel Drive, which I live at, at 9 Rothel Drive, there is a light that has been not in use. At peak periods, when the industrial park, when the John Jay students are coming in, it's impossible in the morning to get out many times. On Route 52, by Brinkerhoff coming in, there is a light that never stops. You're always getting that right turn, and the traffic keeps coming. We have the same problem at night. And we also have a problem at 12 noon, when a lot of people are going for lunch. So that, I think, it should be considered, that if you're adding X amount of more cars coming into the area, that should be another consideration, that the light be reestablished and working properly. Because it's very difficult to get out, particularly to make a left turn at certain times of the day.
Okay.
But as I said, it's the construction and the people and the impact of X amount of population in the area. I've been living in the area for over 40 years, and since, that's about 1971, '72. And it's very difficult to see some of the things that happen with the runoffs. When you get up in the morning and you know the soil is saturated, and you decide you're going to do your laundry, or you're going to wash your dishes? Because you can only run it, one machine, because of the water leaching out and where it's going to go. So that is a very, very important problem for us. So that any planning and any construction in the area should take all this into consideration, the problems that we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, we meet again. The gas station is over. Okay, thank you for not putting in a car wash, thank you for that. Okay, that's a good thing. I live directly behind this orthopedic associates. That in itself is a good thing. Orthopedic associates is fine. My son said it could be a nightclub, it could be a lot worse. So it's a good thing, and I may even need it someday. But the water, the water, we live in Lake City. We have had flooding since 41 years ago we moved in, I moved in. Flooding has destroyed our downstairs carpeting, which we gave up on. It has destroyed furniture, we couldn't get the mildew smell out. We have been flooded so many times, we had to put drains in all around our house. I'm just asking this young man how close to me, because I'm directly behind it. Right, right behind. I've always been behind the restaurant, which has never really been a big problem. But the water problem is a biggie. My son said you need to upgrade the storm drainage. We have to have more drains. This orthopedic has to put in more drains for water. And it, talking about more blacktop, and where's the runoff going? We want to know. Because I'm directly behind this, I'm worried, I'm very worried. I cannot run the washing machine downstairs when we have a heavy rain. I cannot flush the toilet. I can't do the dishwasher upstairs even, because any water we contribute is going to be backed up into our house. We've dealt with this more or less for 41 years. And we didn't know, when we bought the house, it was called Lake City. We found out, the hard way. The big issue is the, oh, and another thing is I want an 8-foot-high privacy fence. I insist on a high fence between me and orthopedic.
Okay. That would be, Chris, are you proposing any fencing right now, or are you proposing landscaping?
Well, I want a privacy fence, that's important to me.
We're not touching the existing education for the property. That's perfectly free on property and a herd, and I can measure it, but it may be somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 to 100 feet, right now.
Do you see the restaurant right now? Do you see the restaurant right now?
Oh, yeah, through the trees. In the winter, I can see it very... I can tell how fast they're going, how bad the road is.
Okay.
So, I might miss that. But, what was I going to say? The water table is too high, and the privacy fence, my two, and the drainage. The drains have to be put in. We have to have more drains for water, because there will be more runoff if you put in a blacktop.
Okay.
Okay? Otherwise, it's not a bad thing. I mean, orthopedic associates is a good thing. I just worry about the water drainage, and my washing machine, and my downstairs, anything downstairs getting flooded again. We've been through it too many times.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's the big issue, the water, the table, and the fence. I want the fence.
Okay. Thank you. Before we call our next person, Chris, will you come on up for us for a minute? And can I just have you, do you have the pointer still? Can you give us a sense, to your question of what does this look like compared to what's out there right now? Can you just give us a sense of where the restaurant is located and what the limits of the pavement are of the restaurant, just so we can see?
Let me just, yeah.
The restaurant now is basically concrete.
Right.
That is cracked, and you have many, many different, how do I say, weeds coming up. Anything coming in sticks right in. It's not completely, it's.
Impervious anymore.
In the back.
Currently, from the property line, the existing building is about 63 feet.
Okay.
We're proposing 50 feet.
All right.
The existing building comes in 63 feet, and to the most remote point, it's 100 feet long.
Okay.
It's currently 300 feet from her dwelling.
Okay.
We're going to be approximately 315 feet away from her dwelling with our building.
Okay. So, just give us a sense of where the pavement is on the site right now versus what you're proposing here, and where the restaurant physically sits on the site versus the building that you're proposing. And then, the darker gray box at the top is the proposed building. It's up towards the.
This is the proposed building.
Okay.
The current building extends out through this area here.
Okay.
This area here is all new pavement right now. The existing pavement extends over here to lots of them.
Okay. So, the entrance way.
But this area is all pavement right now, which is all.
And you're returning it to grass.
Correct.
Okay.
So, but, we have, this entire area of trees right here between our properties. So, in terms of an eight-foot-high fence, I'm not.
I wouldn't necessarily think you would put it at the back of the property, though. I would probably put it up closer to where your parking lot is. And I'm thinking, Chris, more along the lines, maybe not necessarily of a fence, but maybe some sort of evergreen planting or something that would.
I don't have a lot of time. And then.
So, perhaps we can look at some, maybe spruces in this area here that kind of block the view from her dwelling right across. Because I think the other advantage of putting it up here is that's where we've got the fill built up. That's about six feet high right now.
Okay.
So, you get six feet plus the height of the tree.
Okay.
Because if we located them down here, we're losing six feet. That may.
I want to make sure we have appropriate screening. It's a residential, you're joining a residential property, so if we can screen it a little bit, I think that would be appropriate.
This probably sounds like the better location. Okay.
I'm not sure if the fence specifically, but, you know, if there's a.
Will that be affected at all?
In what manner, ma'am?
In the future, in the future, will it be affected? Is it touching on the other two pieces of property?
This is, I believe, your other piece right here. It is touching.
There's a concern, there's one thing, it's going to be sold. And how will this affect the value of my house?
What I can share with you is the proposal that's before you is permitted by zoning.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
What did you say?
It's the proposal that's before you.
Guys, I'm sorry. We just need you to speak into the mic, Chris, if you don't mind.
The proposal that's before you is permitted by zoning. I don't know how it's going to impact the value of your undeveloped lot at this point.
Joe's lot?
And your second lot. I can't tell you that.
Okay. Okay.
Perhaps an assessor, a real estate agent? That's not my forte.
Okay.
But I am going to.
Is the septic tank in the back of my house, that won't be affected at all?
I'm not impacting it.
We're going to, I'm sorry, Chris, we're not able to pick up everyone's comments. So, ma'am, I'm going to bring you back up to the podium in just a minute. I'd like Chris to just finish with us for one minute, and then I'll call you back up.
Her last question was if I'm going to impact the septic tank in the rear of her yard.
Okay.
And this proposal's not going to impact her septic tank.
Okay. So, that was going to be my next question. Just, if you can, in layman's terms, explain the drainage that you're installing on the site and how it's different from what's there right now? Because you are going to resurface the parking lot. It is going to be a lot more solid than it is now.
Currently, you have a situation where the runoff from portions of Route 52 and the entire parking lot come to a series of catch basins that discharge directly into an existing drainage channel here.
Above-ground drainage channel?
I'm sorry?
Above-ground drainage.
Yes, an open channel. And then flows to the north. Under this situation now, we're taking the entire roof area, which is 6,000 square feet, and we're routing that into our bioretention area.
To the front of the property?
To the front of the property. The remainder of this pavement area here is still continuing in the same drainage fashion, but we are detaining and treating the roof runoff from our new building, from the new building. So, that, we're trying to, we mimic our obligation in terms of the flow rate coming off the property, but we're also, through the use of this bioretention area, we're trying to reduce the volume over a period of time.
And where are your catch basins? You said you did put some in.
I can, let me turn on the, I have the grading plan with me that I can turn on to kind of give you an overview of all that.
Okay. Thank you.
She wants to ask her other questions and answer, and we can.
Okay. Thanks. If you can come on back up. Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to mention my concern with the septic tank I have in the back. How will that affect my septic tank, which is put in since 88, I believe? It's a thousand-gallon concrete.
Okay.
So, I don't know if this will affect it at all.
This should not affect it at all.
I don't think so.
He's still going to be several hundred feet away from the edge of your property, at least, I'm going to say, close to probably 200 feet from the edge of your property, from his edge of pavement. I can't promise what will happen with your septic tank, but as far as this project goes, this project should have no impact on your septic tank.
I always thought they had sewers up on 52. I couldn't believe they have.
Well, that's what, that's what we were talking about earlier. It's not available right now. It's possible it will be available before this project is ready to open, and if that's the case, we would.
That would be great. That would be wonderful.
We would want them to hook in, yes.
It would lessen our worries about the whole thing.
Right. Okay. Do we have other folks signed up for comment? Is there anyone else who wanted to offer comment on the application? You can sign up while we're going over the drainage. Okay. And then, also, just members of the board, we did have a couple, or at least one comment letter that I noticed in our package tonight, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, from the Sealees.
We have the roof runoff, which is directed to the bioretention area out front. We have the two catch basins now along Route 52, where there currently are no drainage structures. We're capturing that runoff before it comes onto our property. We have one, two, three, four other catch basins located internal to our site, capturing additional runoff. They're all situated at localized depressions within the parking lot. All the runoff is captured and routed through this catch basin here. We have further treatment where it goes through a hydrodynamic device, and then discharged out to the existing pipe to the channel.
And the flow that you're expecting for that should not exceed what's happening today?
You're correct. The flow rate does not exceed what's happening.
Okay. And, Joe, do we have all the stormwater calculations, and have we been able to review that, to agree or disagree at this point?
Yes. Chris's office put together a full sweep with the pre and post-analysis, and we did review those calculations. Although we had some comments, it wasn't comments specifically. We thought the pre and post part looked correct. We had other comments beside that, but they're fairly minor.
Okay. Okay. So, what you're proposing is you're going to be contributing water to the existing drainage, but it won't be more than what's happening right now?
The flow rate will not be more.
And you're collecting your roof drainage and rooting it to the front of the property, where it should hopefully run through regular.
Correct. It's running through the bioretention area, where it will be detained over a 24 to 48-hour period, so it doesn't contribute immediately to the downstream. So, what we offered, obviously, was to try to further mitigate their concerns. That's how we revisited the parking space area.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for running through that for us. It's helpful to understand it.
The soil conditions there. I'm just curious, when you put in your bio area, how deep are you going to go and refill with gravel, something that get below that silt stuff that just.
Yeah, we're going to excavate out the, actually, in the front, there is a combination of some old Item 4 that was placed there for the parking lot, and there is some silty clay underneath that. We are going to excavate out that material. We're going to replace it with a soil media that's a mixture of topsoil, sand, compost, a little bit of clay in there to meet the soil media criteria for a bioretention area that the DUC sets forth, and we're going to be above your groundwater table. We will have an underdrain that's beneath the soil media that'll sit within a gravel diaphragm. And typical times, they expect us to fully drain within 48 hours.
You say you're going to be above the groundwater level?
Yes, at that location.
Is the groundwater level in the back of the property different from the front?
Yeah, what we saw. It's a slight difference of about a foot.
Okay. So, I'm just trying to reconcile in my head why people, and now they are down further.
They're further downstream. They're at a lower elevation than we are.
Right, correct. And I was just trying to get it in my mind, how the groundwater was going to be affected. It sounds like you're doing that, you'd be taking all the stuff off 52, plus all the stuff off your roof, and diverting it down so it would be below where their groundwater level be affected. Am I incorrect?
Well, they've got, they've got, from what I understand, they have two issues. They have a groundwater issue.
Correct.
And they have a surface runoff issue.
Right. I think the groundwater issue's more the problem, from, you know, using appliances in the house.
So, when it, when it's deposited into the bioretention area, it seeps through the soil media, but beneath that is a gravel diaphragm of stone, and it's got, it's pitched to a perforated pipe. So, it captures that runoff that actually infiltrates down, because some of this you're going to get through evapotranspiration. It's either going to be consumed by the plants, or it's going to evaporate. That which infiltrates through the soil media is captured into the gravel diaphragm, through the perforated pipe, and then routed back into our collection system, and is discharged overland.
Okay, but it's discharged overland to the stuff at lower elevation?
Well, it's discharged at the same discharge point right here. This is where all the runoff in the site goes to this existing channel.
And that's less than it was before?
The flow rate is going to be less than what it is before.
And it should be after the storm? So, you're going to have, the parking lot runoff will happen as the storm is happening, right? That's going to happen almost immediately. But this should be, because it's got to run through the soil, it should be delayed.
This should slow the buildup of the water table.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you. So, I was trying to understand it all.
Okay. Great. So, Chris, you'll look at the screening as well, in the back?
Yes. Is there a preference in terms of the trees? Are spruces acceptable to the board? I mean, they're year-long, year-round?
Maybe a combination of some type of fence with evergreens, something that's going to break the view. Headlights aren't going to be able to.
The headlights aren't an issue. The headlights won't be an issue, especially with the soil mound in the back to the septic.
Okay. Okay. Did we have someone else sign up? Jeff? Thank you, Chris.
Jeff Gartner. I'm in Hopewell in Palin Woods. I actually really, really support this project. A lot of it is for aesthetic reasons. I think the 52 corridor, for a while now, has been a disgrace. This property itself has been a disgrace. I know there's plans to improve some of the things on 52, the gas station, car wash facility. I also run the East Fish Gill Memorial Day Soccer Tournament. I bring about 150 teams right through 52. I like to say that I'm proud of the area that I live in, but that area is a disgrace, and has been for some amount of time. So, I, you know, looking at projects, at least the project that they did with the Circuit City Building on Route 9, turned a rather mundane property that was in disarray into something, you know, Town of Poughkeepsie, I'm sure, is very proud of. I understand, you know, the concerns of the people that are here. They're all valid, water table kind of issues. A lot of that issue is 52 runoff, which, you know, as a business owner myself, I see that as the town's issue that they're trying to mitigate. The fact that they're marginally improving the problem is good. To expect them to do much more than that, not sure I would think that that's really their problem, but they are doing their best. I think the plan to stick the evergreens in the back to, as a bit of a buffer zone should be good. Not sure headlights should be an issue, because they don't really have midnight hours. So, most of their hours are daytime anyway.
I was thinking more during the wintertime. We don't have the leaves on the trees, and you have.
Yeah, but there's not a lot of stuff pointing in that direction. Coming off of 52, it's all east-west traffic that wouldn't be shining.
No, from the parking lot, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, but who's parked in the parking lot at night when there's no office hours? That's the other point.
Okay.
But in general, you know, I think those things, you know, are marginally better. And, you know, unfortunately, it couldn't be a lot better, but I think with maybe some effort by the town, it probably could be a little bit better for the folks that are living behind there. But in general, I think it's the, you know, just the pride of living in this area. You know, I drive around 82, I see condemned houses, or at least one condemned house over by Frankie Suparet, that area by the gas station. Drive the 376 corridor north of 82, you got junkyards, right? I mean, so it's like there's a lot of major areas, major roads throughout our town that are disgusting. And, you know, this is one project, and the gas station on 52 is another project that, you know, can do, go a long way towards putting a better facade on the town.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to come up and offer comment on Orthopedic Associate Site Plan? You can come on back up.
He's right that on 52, it is an eyesore, and I agree with that. But what I also want to iterate, we have so many people coming into the area that I think what we have to take into consideration as we put new construction into the area, which is needed and should be done, we have to consider the health, safety, and welfare of the people that are already living in the area. And to whatever construction plans are being made, that everything should be held up to a high code, and that this code should err on the side of the people. The population increase in our community is good, but we should have the facilities that, as I said, health, safety, and welfare for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Chris, come on back up for us. Any other questions or comments from board members? Brendan, I know we don't have the turning radio yet. The one thing I didn't ask you, Chris.
Chris, was the lighting?
That was provided.
Okay. Michelle, did we review the lighting plan? And what does the lighting look like towards the back of the property? Are there any light packs on the building or anything like that? Because as we talk about screening, I want to make sure we're aware of the lighting that's going to go on at that site.
The lights in the parking lot are also going to be on timers as this operation closes at seven.
And what about on the building itself? Do you have any light packs or anything on the building itself?
There is none being proposed on the building.
Okay. Okay. So nothing shining towards the back, then? It's all going to just be lighting directly onto the parking lot?
Correct.
All right. So Brendan, we need to be able to take a look at the turning radio. You've given us an updated plan, Chris, already, or you're going to, that's going to show the sidewalks and some of these other changes?
Yes, I was going to address all the comments that we got from the town consultants as part of the July, in the July's middle.
Okay. All right. Let's talk about the parking spaces and the potentially the reduction of the parking spaces. It doesn't sound like land banking is an option with this site based on the parking needed of the applicant. So the proposal was to go from nine by eighteen, I'm sorry, from 10 by 20 to nine by 18 on at least half of the, half of the sites, excuse me, parking spots. Does that sound reasonable? I'm fine with it?
The only thing, if I could add to that. The only thing I would add to that, that maybe in consideration of that, that they look into maybe some additional subsurface detention underneath the parking lot, you know, so for like whatever reduction might be accomplished by reducing the size, that they can reduce it by an equal amount by some additional subsurface detention under the parking lot.
As opposed to reducing the size of the parking spots or in addition?
No, in addition.
To enhance the, further enhance?
Right. So for every, you know, cubic foot of water, we help reduce it. They agree to reduce an additional cubic foot by some means of subsurface detention.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm keen on that idea because our obligation is to reduce the flow rate. An underground detention system-
But we're not obligated to reduce the parking space either.
I understand that.
So that's what we're talking about.
I'm just offering this as a response to what the community's asking, to try and reduce the volume. The volume's produced by impervious area. So if you go and incorporate underground detention, detention is meant to attenuate, which is reduce the flow rate. It's not going to reduce your overall volume.
But you can store it though.
Understood.
But you can store it.
Right.
I could store it, but it's still going to end up at the same location. And that's what they're trying to-
But if it's at the same location after it's already perked, what was there initially, I think that's what we're talking about.
Right. And then you're going to get some infiltration as well.
You're not going to get infiltration in the parking lot with underground detention.
Because?
Because when you consider the head elevation difference and the existing infrastructure that's there, you're in the groundwater table. So you're not going to perk into the groundwater table.
Well, how is your bio?
I'm at a higher elevation there and I'm coming directly off with the roof leaders off the building. We have internal drains that's discharging right into grade. When I look in my parking lot here, I have to go through an inlet, which is my catch base, and then get circulated to-
All right. So what's your pond invert?
My pond invert? I have to blow off the plant.
Well, you maybe don't have to get into this, but I think the idea is that it should be evaluated.
Okay. Even if there's just some other method of helping, I liked the word attenuate the storm flow. I think, you know, I have no objection to the reduction. I think, you know, there's certainly a lot of compact cars out there, so having some smaller sites, as long as there's also some larger parking spots, that makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
I don't think anybody argues with having less pavement. So that being said, let's also, if there's other ways, if there's something else you can do to help mitigate that storm flow, I think that's a good thing.
Okay.
Laurie, you could also look at other forms. There's porous paving too or something, you know, if there is, or if there is some parking that's a different, you know, obligated for certain people, maybe they could use pavers or porous pavement.
Okay.
Look at some other options.
I think we got to think about this on a grand scale, you know, in terms of the overall watershed that contributes to the individual question. You know, we're just a very minute part of that. So, I mean, I think these are all grand ideas here, but at the same time, we've got to consider the economics of our project. So incorporating, you know, pervious pavers, underground detention, you know, we'd be back to the fact that let's just go with the pavement as it is because we're already meeting the expectations. So we don't want to get too caught up in incorporating a number of measures into this project that may hinder the economics of it as well.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you just meant when you said, "Let's go with the paving as it is." That was confusing to me.
What I'm saying is, I don't want to, you know, I-
But Chris, if you reduce your pavement area by X square feet, that's a reduction in cost.
That's a reduction in cost, but when you start incorporating-
Which then could be used for further detention or some other measure. So it becomes a wash.
Well, I don't think we're trying to tell you exactly what it should be. What we're asking is if there's other ways that you, if there's something you can do, I don't know what those might be, but if there's something you can do, if it's not pervious pavers, if it's something else, let's-
The point I was going to get at is I just want to make sure that whatever we do, it's an equivalent balance, not something that-
That's fair enough. That's fair enough. That's fine. That's fine. But we're definitely, I think the board is fine with having the smaller site. For me personally, I'd rather have, and I don't know how you would go about this, but I'd rather have a mix so that up towards, closer to the building, you have both size spaces that way. If there's, you know, again, not knowing as patients may be coming in, I don't want to have, you know, all the big cars having to walk across the parking lot or all the small cars having to walk across if we can do it kind of side by side.
Okay.
I'm not saying that correctly, but do you know what I mean?
You're looking for kind of like a, along this corridor here, you know, if we had maybe, say if there's 10 spaces here, five which are nine by 18 and five which are-
Yeah, just sort of a mix so that you have both sizes of spots equidistant from your building.
I got it.
Laurie, could I make a suggestion? Maybe that they look at the length of the spot and not the width? Maybe leave the width at 10 and cut the length down to 18, which wouldn't have, you know, then you wouldn't have to worry about which spot.
Now, does that also fit the larger vehicles or how?
I think 18, well, I'm not 100% certain of that. I don't think, I think the length is a lot, you know, opening doors are really what the problem is, not, you know, not the length of the vehicle, so.
Eighteen's more than sufficient.
Okay. So do you want to do 10 by 18 then?
We can do 10 by 18.
And that gets you roughly the same?
Equivalent.
Equivalent. Okay. Thank you, Brendan. Good suggestion. So Chris, you'll have, you'll have some of these changes made and you'll have new plans for us, you said, by the end of July?
Yes.
So you would likely be on the second meeting of August, which would be the 19th?
Okay.
Is that?
That works for me.
As long as we have, I'm sorry. Okay. So bear with me. So 15 days prior, August 5th is probably a stretch. You'd have to have plans in by early next week to make the August 5th meeting. August 19th, you'd have to have the plans in by August 4th.
Let me, can I contact Pam tomorrow or not?
We normally would adjourn tonight. If we don't adjourn to a date certain, then you have to re-advertise.
August 4th would be, when do I need it in by? When you said early next week? Is that like Tuesday or Wednesday?
It's a Monday.
So two weeks prior to August 5th would be a week from tonight? Is that correct? A week from today, I'm sorry, the 22nd? So they'd have to be in by July 22nd. Twenty, well, right, 21st.
She's Monday. Yeah, that's doable.
Okay. So just to run back over, you're going to look at screening for the residential property in the back? You're going to look at changing the parking spots to 10 by 18 and whatever mitigation, additional mitigation with the storm flow, if there's anything we can do there. The turning radio for the trucks, we need to have. And then, bear with me, I'm just reading through.
Fire Advisory Board comments.
And the Fire Advisory Board comments, correct. Oh, and the sidewalk. I knew there was something else. And the sidewalk across the front of the property.
Do you want, for the fence, I believe the neighbor had asked for eight foot. Is that correct? Was that what it was?
Yeah, I'd rather, personally, from aesthetically, I'm not sure an eight-foot fence is the right thing. You're saying you have a land berm there, so if you can give us a feel for, if there's a land berm, if it's a, maybe a four-foot fence with some evergreens behind it or something that will still break up the view and provide adequate screening, I think that's fine, but take a look at it. What's not there now is the land berm that they're going to put in. So we'll have Mr. Lapine walk us through what he's proposing at our next meeting. We're about to adjourn. We'll get to tell you in one second.
Laurie, one other, one other thing, and I'm sorry to bring it up earlier. It's come up in our previous discussions of this project where we talked about not providing a connection to the adjoining parcel, but allowing for a potential future connection. And I think really what comes into play there is the location of the refuse area.
I think-
Whether that could be offset to the side.
Or if there could be a future plan to do that in the event that a connection was-
Except that's, that's a Mason structure, isn't it?
Yes.
That's not so easy to relocate.
Okay.
I think by the next meeting, we probably would have the correspondence back from the bank on this for you.
All right. So also the adjoining property. So if you don't have it back, if you can give us some alternate location for the refuse?
Okay.
Okay. Anything else we want to make sure we see next time?
Laurie, I'm not sure where, how far the conversations with the DOT have gone and if there's any update on any of theirs.
Plans have been submitted to the DOT. We've been told we're in the queue. And I know we circulated as well. So that's the status. What we are going to provide then, we have the traffic report as well, which we got from Brendan. We're going to forward that to the DOT.
Brendan, are you expecting any issues with that? I mean, we're further away from the intersection. We're one going from two entrances to one, I would think.
I wouldn't anticipate any issues.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments before we adjourn? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing to August 5th? Second? All in favor? Aye. So August 5th, we'll see this application again and we'll see those changes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is MAM Realty amended site plan and special permit on Hosner Mountain Road. And we'll just give a moment here for the switch over. Thank you, folks, for offering your comments. Appreciate it. Bear with us one moment. We're just, we're checking to see if our applicant is. There he is. All right. Pam, do we have everything we need to open the public hearing? Okay. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for MAM Realty amended site plan?
So moved. Second?
Second. All in favor? Aye. And then Keith, do you have a? Excellent. Bear with us for one moment. We're going to put the new plan up on the board so everyone can see it. Scott? Scott, we just need to put the next plan up into the laptop if we can.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Keith Stoudhart with Cronin Engineering. We're here representing the applicant, MAM Realty. For the project site located at 92 Hosner Mountain Road, as you know, there's an existing building there. It's located in the B1 zoning district. The applicant's owned it for many years now. We have a tenant in there that is, does that mean? Has a tenant in there that operates a business, retail business of internet sales of common goods. Most of the sales are through the mail. Most of the transactions develop through the mail. There are times or occasions where the purchasers will come to the site to pick up whatever it is they bought. In addition to that, we are seeking a special permit to attempt to provide a small flea market from roughly Memorial Day through Labor Day, specifically on weekends. It would probably host up 10 to 20 or so vendors at the most. So this is something that the onsite tenant is seeking to do. So we've been back and forth with the board over some minor issues, but the net result of this project is that there is essentially no construction proposed as part of this development except for the installation of a sign out front. There is no other construction proposed. So with that, we'd be glad to engage in conversation.
Sure. So you're going to have, it looks like from the plan, what you illustrated here would be just temporary markers and things like that? It's not actually pavement? It's just?
Yeah. Well, right here, this is an existing gravel drive.
Right.
This is the existing paved parking lot.
Okay.
This is a container here. There's a container here.
Okay.
This here is a trailer, a mobile trailer, but it's not on wheels at the moment. It's on blocks, but it's a mobile trailer nonetheless. It's not a permanent structure. This is an existing barn, framed barn that was there at the time of purchase. And this is the existing one-story building where the storage of the products are kept for her sales. This is Hosner Mountain Road. Our plan for the flea market would be to have people, the public, come in through here and down this gravel and park in the grass. We would have it supervised so that there's a safe ingress and egress of the traffic. The vendor parking would be on this northern gravel drive over to here in the back, also the grass area. And then we're proposing just in the middle, the tables, which would hold the vendors.
So again, even though they're drawn, that's just to show us where things would be located. It's not actually changes to the site. It's just all grass.
Yeah, there's no changes to the site. It'll still, it'll be grass. There's nothing being proposed, nothing being constructed. We're just depicting how we feel that a small flea market could occur on this site.
Okay. I know we've talked a couple of times about what the special permit would entail, so I think where we are, and Michelle, you're going to make sure I say this correctly, the applicant would receive the special permit to run the flea market from May through September, but each vendor, when they're going to be there, would need to provide to the applicant the application. And then for each weekend, we would need to make sure that individual permits were issued for each vendor. So the requirement for the peddler's permit would need to be collected from each vendor and brought to the town for individual permits.
Right. Each vendor would be licensed?
Right.
Through the town application.
Right. Okay. And we prefer that to happen, if possible, in bulk. So we don't want individual vendors necessarily coming in separately. If the applicant can collect the vendor applications and bring them in, that would just make it easier for the town, especially knowing we need to get police department and things like that sign off.
That's fair enough.
Tom, is there anything else with regard to the permitting for both the individual vendors and for the site that we should go over right now?
No.
Okay. Then Keith, I think just a couple of things we want to make sure we clarify because technically, you know, looking at the site, there's things labeled on this plan that we want to make sure are clear. I think, and just correct me if I'm wrong, there's, the main building right now houses the retail location?
Yes.
It has or has had an apartment that's not an approved apartment?
There's a livable space at the back here that was there at the time it was purchased by the owner.
Okay.
And nothing's changed on the inside, right? He has not changed anything on the inside since he purchased. So there's-
Just looking through the window, I don't believe it meets code. You can see the metal ceiling, there's no insulation. I mean, it's just above the building.
I have not been in the building, so I'm not aware of the...
Okay.
...status of that space.
Okay, so I think we just want to make sure that the plan itself is not labeled that it has an apartment, because it doesn't have an approved apartment right now. Is that correct?
Right. But again, they could have a caretaker's unit if they brought it up to code.
Okay. Okay, and then the...
And again, I think there's a size limitation of 50% or whatever is a size limitation.
Okay, which should be under that.
Yeah, I think we're under 50%. It's back in this one-third.
Okay. Okay. You mentioned there's a couple of trailers on the site, and one of them is a mobile trailer, but it's not actually mobile right now.
Well, let me clarify that. This is a metal container. It's a roll-off container.
Okay.
So there's one back here in the corner that the owner uses for storage.
Okay.
There's another one right here that's in not great shape that the owner is willing to take off the site.
Okay.
This here is a mobile trailer that is not, you know, the wheels are off, but it's on blocks.
Okay. Is it used or is it...
No.
Okay.
It's just sitting there.
Okay.
And then this is a framed barn that was on the site.
Okay.
We don't know how long.
Okay, so it sounds... I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my...
Yeah, there's no permits on the trailer either.
On the one that has no, the mobile trailer, or on one of the other two that are sitting as storage?
The one with the steps leading up to it, the one...
This one here?
Right. There's no paperwork on that downstairs.
Do we need paperwork for a mobile trailer?
Unless, I guess, you put license plates on it, if it's registered, you wouldn't need it, but if it's a permanent fixture, you would. It's either a permanent fixture or it's mobile, as in registered.
Okay.
Okay. Just look into that and let's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it rundown or is it livable?
Excuse me?
Is it livable or is it rundown? Is it...
Oh, it's just an office.
Oh, it's all...
I think it's like a construction...
It's a construction site office trailer.
Yeah.
All right, it's not a mobile.
It's not a mobile home.
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
It's a construction trailer.
Okay. And folks, we're getting a lot of feedback on our mics. We can actually pick up the conversation in the audience. I just ask if you would. Okay. All right, so Keith, we have, you talked about you're going to flag where the traffic should go as they're coming into park. You'll have signs showing vendors where they would go.
Right.
As far as the entrances, are they paved right now? So I know the retail entrance, I think, that's a paved parking lot. What about the apron of the...
This is a paved entrance here. This is a paved entrance here. This is the paved parking lot.
Okay.
This is an existing gravel drive back to this container.
Okay.
And this is a gravel drive over here. We had talked, there's some comment from the consulting engineers about paving this apron, but we feel that paving that apron on the north end here would be confusing with the driveway to the neighbor to the north, so we felt leaving it gravel would be more of a delineation between the two, as opposed to paving that apron, and it would be confusing if this is all paved in here.
Okay.
And it's...
I think depending on the success here, we may revisit that in the end of the year.
Absolutely, you know, we may come, you know, in a year's time, you know, we may say, well, we're withdrawing the special permit.
Okay.
You know, this is something that they're thinking of, the tenant's thinking of.
We're not sure if it's even going to happen, but if it works out for her, then great, and
then, but, you know, we don't know. It's...
Okay. Questions or comments from board members? Okay. Brendan, as far as the plan right now and the way we're going to route traffic and things like that, are you, any questions or anything outstanding?
I think we noted it. I mean, they're going to provide, I think it's noted on the plan, they're going to provide cones to delineate, you know, the two-way traffic into the back area of the property. I did notice on the fire board's review that they had comments in June. I'm not sure I know what those comments were in June, but they said they weren't addressed. I don't know, Keith, if you have those in your file.
Don't remember. I think I might have got them.
Pam, do we have, do we have the June 3rd Fire Advisory Board comments on hand? Bear with us for a second, we'll find them. While we're looking, anything else, Brendan?
No, I think we did, we did make it that recommendation for that apron to be paved, you know, mainly because it's, at least in the time when it's going to be utilized, there's going to be governmented parking spaces, 15 spaces back there, that vehicle is going to be coming in and out of the site, and just to prevent traffic, you know. The purpose of that apron is really to prevent material from being tracked or kicked out onto the main road, so that's really the need for a paved apron there.
Okay.
Another option would be something more like a construction entrance, just to keep down any sort of debris from tracking onto the road, but by the time you put something like that in, it might just be better putting a paved apron in.
Brendan, it's, it sounds like there's going to be between 10 to 20 vendors on the site, so that would be the, you know, you have 10 to 20 pulling in and obviously then leaving. Is that, I don't know what the kind of threshold is for that kind of stuff.
I guess if you try to relate it to, you know, if it was even a residential driveway, you know, it'd be, you know, a single house, it would be required to have a metering. I mean, I think that's part of the town code.
Okay.
You know, that a driveway, a driveway even be installed, it'll, you know, it'll drive ways in.
What is it?
We might allow a bond to be placed that, you know, if it didn't work out in a year...
That sounds fair. I mean, right now, it's...
In a year, if they're still in business, they got to put the apron in, you know.
That sounds fair. We would agree to that, but I mean, it's all gravel right now to around the barn. It's all gravel. It's pretty stiff.
Keith, your access to the main parking area, what's the aisle width? Now, in the back, where you have the grass parking, what's the, you have an aisle width there?
Well, we have shown on the plan, it's probably about 14 or so.
Just want to make sure that cars can pass.
We showed a 20-foot, you know, between the gravel and the lawn, that two cars can pass by each other.
Okay, okay.
The gravel is not 20 feet itself, but two cars could certainly be dividing, you know, along the lawn.
Okay. Keith, from my understanding, if that's where you're going to utilize cones, right, to delineate...
Right.
Yes.
Let's shorten it out.
Because I...
Okay.
Right. All right, so Keith, the comments from the June 3rd Fire Advisory Board, handicap spaces in the flea market area are needed.
I don't know how to do that.
Because they're on grass. Fair enough. Refuge container locations need to be shown and marked on plan map.
We're showing, oh, did I? All right, we'll show the garbage cans. I thought I had.
Emergency turnarounds need to be shown and marked on the plan map. But you have, you have gravel and grass, right? Okay. And you're not, there's nothing that's, no guardrails, nothing that's going to prevent anybody from being able to turn around if they need to pull onto the grass?
No.
Okay, are you going to have the whole site mode then where this is happening?
Well, he maintains, he maintains a lawn year-round, right?
Okay.
That's what he does for 11.
Okay. Is the board comfortable that we can just have the folks turn around on the grass if they need to? And then they have a few comments from the May 6th meeting as well. No apartment should be built in the main building, install a sprinkler system, central alarm should be installed, and the knockbox system should be installed. Hazard, MSDS information on any hazardous material. Do you have hazardous material at the site right now?
We do, no.
And refuse enclosures must be fairproof or at least 30 feet from the structure. Where's your current refuse enclosure for the retail?
Well, we're just going to show garbage. We've got dumpsters over here.
Are they 30 feet away?
Yeah. I forget where the heck they are.
Just where is that? Maybe you got a, you got a paving thing because of ADA.
Okay.
You can't, you can't exclude ADA. We got to figure something out.
Scott, I didn't catch what you were saying.
We were just looking about as far as handicap spaces. It seems like it poses a little bit of a problem, being that it's all grassed, and that's what we're just talking about. How do we try to address or accommodate one or two ADA spaces there? I just think that's just something we're going to have to try to figure out.
Over here?
I mean, if they had movable signs, you could have a couple, you could just place a couple of signs in front of them where you'd want, near, closer to the vendor sites.
Excuse me?
For the handicap spots, if you had a couple of movable signs, you could just place them...
Well, I have no problem with the signage. It's, you know, in order to make it ADA compliant, it's got to be an impervious or a hard surface, so, you know, I'm going to do a paved section.
Maybe it's the same kind of thing. Maybe we start off for a year with a couple of signs, and if it becomes successful, then we got to come back and revisit that.
I would agree with that. Because right now, this is, you know, this is a...
That's fine. No, no, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, so the apron, ADA parking, is there anything else?
Could be bonded, yeah, but in the interim, we'll put a couple of signs up, which is easier, you know.
Okay. All right. Keith, you have the minutes from the June 3rd FAA meeting?
Yeah, I got FAA.
All right. Any other questions or comments from board members? Brendan, I think we captured your comments. Michelle, any comments? Joe, any comments?
Yeah, we, Keith and I discussed some about the existing well and the showing, except the areas, they're showing portable toilets for use during the flea market. We had thought, and he was planning to put a note on the plan that says the existing well would not be used by the, you know, the vendors or the people that come there, wouldn't be for public use, so that would have to be noted on the plans, but we thought we should check with the Health Department for this general change in use for the whole site and see if they're going to impose anything in addition.
Okay.
Keith, have you had any discussion with anyone at Board Health?
No.
Scott, any other comments before we open for public comment? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to offer comment on the MAM Realty amended site plan and special permit on Hosner Mountain Road? We'll have you come up. We have, come on up.
Francis, I think Cameron's last question.
Okay.
Water fountain. Good evening. Name's Francis Gildrenew, and I live right next to this development.
Okay.
And I just seen the notice went up there, went up a month or so ago, but this meeting.
Okay.
But it seems, it seems as if everyone knows except ourselves, this is why we're at the meeting tonight.
Right.
So...
Right, so what happens in the planning process is that an applicant comes to the planning board and gives us a lot of information, and we have discussions with them.
Okay.
And once we think the plan is in a form that looks fairly final, we have a public hearing, and so that's what you're having tonight, is the first public hearing to look at this application and share it with the public and gain public comment and feedback.
Okay.
So it's typical for the planning board to have several discussions with an applicant before we would immediately come to public comment.
Okay, I was on the impression they were already granted a permit?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, that's what the purpose of tonight is.
Oh, okay.
We're talking through what the applicant is requesting and what the special permit would entail, so that the public knows, and then we can receive comment.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
The reason being, I live 150 yards from this, from this development here.
Okay.
And didn't know what was going in, and this is why I'm, the reason for coming to the meeting tonight.
Absolutely.
To find out what it is. And now that I've found out, there's a Stormville Flea Market over here, and if this is going from May to October, this is our only access in and out to our homes. For the volume of traffic, whatever it may be, in and out there, we are going to be stuck. The 40 homes that are already in there, they've only the one access right past that. And not only that, but the vehicles that are coming in to this flea market, it's going to end up, they're going to go down in and turn right at my front door and go back out again. So these are my issues with it, that I have with it, so close to my front door.
Am I correct, your driveway is a driveway that's actually sort of shared with the back entrance to this property?
No, that's the lady behind me.
Okay.
My entrance is just 100 yards around the corner.
Around the corner, okay.
Just around that, the bend on Hosner Mountain.
Okay.
Or Alton's Way or Hosner Mountain, Alton's Way.
Does anyone have, does anyone happen to know how many vendors we have at the Stormville Flea Market on average?
The Stormville Flea Market is about 150.
Very big, it's very big.
I was going to say, suppose you had 200, okay.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
And we know the traffic is on 52 from that.
Right.
I'm not saying this is going to be on the same scale.
No, no.
But for us living there, it will be the same scale getting in and out.
Right.
Plus, the whole racket for the whole summer, for to get in and out, that's, that's my concern.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
My concerns are about the same as Frances's. We do have one way in and one way out of our development. There's no back way, there's no other entrance, and we've had a problem looking at overflowing dumpsters, as it is now.
Okay.
They have a little signing shop, whatever going on in there.
Okay.
And it's usually overflowing with stuff, children's toys all outside, just like a mess.
Okay.
And if they could put maybe some kind of a sign up that there's no outlet coming into our development, it's a so-called trailer park, but we have a really nice, you know, development in there, and...
Okay.
I don't know, I just think it's going to be not such a great idea. If they could think of a way of putting no outlet, you know, down to our development, something to keep these people from coming in down there.
I think that's very doable.
And if they're blocking the road, how do we get in and out? You know, it's going to bring a lot of traffic in.
Okay.
I just can't see it working in that spot.
Okay.
That's about it. I mean, other than this, there's no problem with it, but I feel, and the residents feel, it is going to cause some kind of traffic, a lot of noise. It's very quiet in the area, and this is going to bring in noise, traffic, horns, garbage.
Okay.
Whatever, it's just a concern.
Well, I think the garbage, we can certainly...
Yeah, because we've been looking at it now, overflowing all over.
Okay.
But they can do something to keep that all down and let us in and out and...
Yeah, and I think certainly a no outlet sign, even if it's just up temporarily while it's running or something like that.
Yeah, really, there's no, no way for us to get in or out. If they're blocking the road, bringing trailers in or vendors in, and we have to sit there waiting, we have enough trying to get out onto 52 with the, you know, the Stormville Flea Market.
Right.
We can't get out. So this might give us another headache. So this might give us another headache, something to think about.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's signed it?
Eleanor Plummer?
Eleanor? Eleanor, sorry.
I live right next door, my driveway is adjacent. These vendors are gonna come in with their heavy trucks, and my house shakes when heavy trucks come in. It's also gonna be a lot of garbage and a lot of people, and since we have Stormville Flea Market, I don't see why we can't just have that. This is not fair to a quiet neighborhood, my house is right next door to this. I have a quiet house, that's what I want, that's what I pay taxes for, and my taxes are not cheap. Now, this is gonna come in, and there's gonna be all kinds of people, all kinds of dirt and filth, and it's just gonna be terrible. I just don't agree with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed it? Is there anyone else who'd like to offer comment on MAM Realty? I think we need to make sure that there isn't refuse on the site that's not being cleared.
Just, I forgot to, I forgot to mention earlier, we did have the directional signs proposed, you know, the temporary vendor parking sign and the public parking signs that go into the site. We were remiss in not showing the garbage collection cans on the site.
Keith, you can have no parking on the street as well?
Absolutely, and there's no parking on the street, and we can do a temporary sign on the, as well as that, no parking in the street signs. The no outlet sign, we can do that temporarily, we have no problem with that. Again, I just wanna, you know, reiterate, this is, we don't know if this is gonna work. It's a shot.
I know.
And we gotta revisit it in a year, and if things are, there's a, we have to come back in a year to redo the special permit. This is a special permit, so if there are issues or problems, or if it's running swimmingly, we'll know that in a year, and we can revisit that, and then we can talk about doing the apron, we can talk about handicap, we can talk about all that other stuff.
I wanna talk about a couple of the other comments first, though, before we jump the gun. We originally said there would be no one staying overnight at the site.
Correct.
So we didn't talk about trucks, would it be our expectation that vendors would come in their own private vehicles, or are you expecting there to be trucks?
We're expecting people to do what they do at the Stormville Flea Market, vans, maybe they'll have a little six by, you know, four by eight trailer with stuff on it, you know, box, small box truck, maybe.
But is this a Saturday, Sunday?
It's a Saturday, Sunday thing.
So they're staying overnight in a camper?
What's that?
No, they're not supposed to stay overnight.
There's no overnight accommodations, no, that's not permitted.
And what are the hours of operation? I know they're on the plan, but just.
I think we said from nine to, nine to four.
And no overnight?
No overnight.
The vendor parking, where it is in the back there, how close is that to the nearest residence? Do you know where the house is, I just wanna get a sense of how.
The Plummer resident, I hope I said that correctly, is, that's about the edge of the house right here. If you can see it up here on the map, on the aerial, so it's roughly about here is their edge of her house. We have some parking shown in front of the old barn, and, you know, depending on how many vendors, or there may be some cars parked back there, we don't anticipate all these spaces to be utilized. If there's eight vendors on a given weekend, they're probably gonna park over here in the gravel, maybe a couple over here. So how far is that from there to there? I would say it's at least 40 or 50 feet from the house to the property line, another 15 or 20 feet to the parking area, so it's like 60 feet or so.
Is that two houses back, is that shared by the way?
There's two houses on the neighboring property, yes, there's two dwellings, two structures anyway. This is the driveway entrance for her lot, and this is a gravel drive onto our lot.
I think we certainly wanna make sure, and Scott, maybe you can help me with the, with the language, I wanna, I wanna limit, like, I don't want tractor trailers coming in here or anything like that, so is there, is there a size, or maybe Brendan, a truck size limitation or something like that, so we can just make sure we don't have huge vehicles coming onto the site, especially knowing that we're not gonna have, you know, there's no paved drive here, so heavier the vehicle, the more dust is on.
You could potentially prohibit it from the site, but you can't prohibit it from the road, you know, the truck's gonna go there. It may be a sign there that says you can't go into the site, but it's a town road, there's no weight restriction on the bridge, you know, there's no way to.
Yeah, but we don't need to park semis back here or anything like that, that's what I'm saying, if you're a vendor coming to the site, we wouldn't have them in the site parking on the grass.
Correct, you can prohibit it from the site, but that doesn't mean that they don't attempt to go in there. There's no way to stop a truck from attempting to get there. They may get there, see a sign, and leave, but they have to get to that point.
We don't, I understand the concern, but I don't envision an 18 millimeter coming up here for any of these vendors. Anything, like a U-Haul truck, you know, 16-foot truck, 20-foot box truck?
Maybe you could just suggest the size, so we can put that on the plan, just saying.
Or if you're soliciting vendors, say, you know, no vehicle over a certain size, and that would work.
What's a fair size, you know, I mean, 20-foot?
We could probably look it up, yeah, but, you know, probably a smaller box truck, right, maybe a 20 or 24 footer.
Yeah, we anticipate people with SUVs and vans and things of that nature.
Okay. We need to make sure that the refuse on site is not gathering outside of refuse bins, if there's a bigger bin that's needed, if there's a different.
Yeah, we understand that, there's been a couple of issues with the dumpster, but there are also some things that I believe the tenant stores outside underneath the overhang, you know, some children's toys and things like that, I think we can ask the tenant to try to keep that stuff on the inside.
Okay, maybe during non-open hours of the store or something like that?
Yep.
And then you have, have you looked, did you tell us where you're putting the refuse bins for this?
Well, we have one dumpster that's in this location here.
But that's for the store?
That's for the, yeah, we will show a couple garbage cans during flea market events, we'll show, you know, four, six of them located around the site.
Okay, so are you gonna have just like a larger refuse bin dropped off?
Just the garbage cans, but, you know, 30, 40.
No, I know, but you're gonna have to have them picked up by Royal or someone, so, okay.
Yeah, they'll be dumped into the dumpster up front.
Okay, and if the dumpster's already overflowing, I just wanna make sure whatever it is, it's sized for the right capacity for this, so.
We got a four-yard dumpster there now. Which is probably four by six, four by, something like that, four by six.
Okay, but we're hearing, we're hearing from residents that we're seeing it overflowing, so I wanna make sure that it's being picked up appropriately, and that if we have an event like this, that it's not overflowing.
The owner is aware of it right now, and it'll be taken care of.
Okay, very good. All right. Brendan, anything else, and we can put a no outlet sign up, it won't necessarily stop somebody from trying to see whether or not there's an outlet, but hopefully it will discourage most people. Anything else you would recommend here in the neighbor concern?
I think there's, I mean, something, something within, you know, the special permit that, you know, if there's, if parking and or traffic become an issue, that there's some mechanism to bring them back, bring them back into the, in front of the plan board.
I know we hope for that issue, but if we have it, it's gonna be a problem, though. Do you also, and I'm sorry, I know you have a couple of different signs you're putting up, I know you're marking the driveways, do you also have a no parking on the road sign?
We did not show that, but we showed the temporary signage for the vendor parking and the public parking, but we can certainly add no parking signs along the roadway, or actually, we could probably ribbon it up, you know, put a big ribbon up there, something during events, you know, just a big string with some no parking on it, you know, whatever the board's comfortable with, we'd be willing to give it a shot.
I would wanna make sure that that wouldn't be interpreted, so then try to park somewhere else on the street. I'd rather just have like a no street parking permitted or something like that sign, and that's probably good enough. Okay, and, I'm sorry, someone behind, did someone wanna come back up? Did you wanna come back up? You're welcome to come back up. Thanks, Keith.
Since my driveway is adjacent, how do we keep people off my property and my driveway?
Keith, if you, can you just show where the signs are going to be? We asked for signs, very specific.
People read signs and obey that?
Very specific, the folks who would be using that side of the access would be the vendors only, and we did ask, and Keith, you can just tell us what the signs will say and where they'll be placed.
The sign at the entrance for the vendor parking is to read, vendor parking only with a directional arrow, so it'll be before your driveway, it'll be between the two driveways.
And what about my property, it fronts Elton's Way? Are they gonna park all over my grass?
No, they're parking down by the barn on this property.
Uh-huh, don't count on it.
You can come back up if you'd like, we have to have you come back to the podium, 'cause we have to capture your comments for our minutes.
Signs are all well and good, but who's gonna police them? You know, anywhere you go, you could see signs, no parking, no this, no that, this woman's house is right there. Sign is the sign, but who's gonna police the signs? No, another problem.
Okay, thank you. Keith, my inclination is to say, let's, let's see what happens with the first couple, and maybe have you come back after the first two or three weeks and just let the board know how they've gone and what's happened there, and that way.
Yeah, we don't think that anything's gonna happen for the rest of this season, no, so I don't think anything's gonna happen this year. So if this thing goes to a resolution, we would ask that it be for the calendar year of 2015, so we don't think anything's gonna happen, we're not sure. But if we get the approval, it'll be from the time of approval through September of 2015. Yes, if there is an event, we can certainly monitor it and submit a letter to the board if you want.
That would be fine, and that way also if there's a concern, it would give the board the ability to ask you to come back in, or if there's terms of the permit we need to revise, something like that. You know, I'm just conscious that if we do have folks parking on other people's property and that sort of thing, we need to make sure that that's not.
Yeah, we're gonna make sure that that does not happen, we don't, obviously don't want any issues with the neighbors, and, you know, if this thing does work out for everybody involved, then maybe next year we're back here talking about, you know, a success story. We don't know, you know, we'll see.
Does that make sense to the board that we just asked the first couple, first couple of events here, we get some sort of a letter saying, here's the number of vendors, here's what we saw, and that way we get a sense of where that's going? Keith, give us one more second, you can come on back up, Michelle.
I'd just like to repeat, the noise level is going to increase, and I don't want that. And I pay big taxes for a quiet, it's my property, I want it quiet, it's gonna be awful.
Other questions or comments from board members? Keith, I think we've asked you to make a couple of tweaks to the plan, we've also limited the hours of operation here, I would assume that we won't have folks there, you know, very early in the morning, I'm guessing you're gonna be setting up an hour before and taking down within an hour after, that sort of thing. So I wanna make sure that we're sticking to that.
Will the owner be on site during these?
The tenant, yes, she'll be running them. Yeah, she's, that's not gonna let people show up and operate, yeah, she's gonna be there at the events, and she's in charge of the events.
Fairwood, we'll call you in just a second. Keith, you're clear on the changes we're asking you to make, too, and if you could put the note on the plan regarding whatever size truck you and Brendan come up with?
Well, am I doing another plan change, or was this gonna be a condition of the?
We would condition for it.
Okay, that's fine.
And I think you have a couple of other, a couple of other things to address that we've already talked about with regard to the dumpsters, the trailer accessory part, just make sure that we've got all of that stuff cleaned up.
I'll have a meeting with Scott.
Okay, and we did have, it looks like one more, one more person who'd like to speak. Come on up to the podium.
I don't know if this would help with noise, but something that could be done to help with traffic, if they had somebody out there, I mean, Stormville does it, I know we do it with fire department stuff, having somebody out there directing people where to park, to go in there.
I think Laurie, the plan does actually outline that there's gonna be a monitor on site.
Yeah, that's part of the plans, to have the vendor parking supervised and the public parking supervised.
Yeah, just have somebody out there, you know, the vendor director there, and if not, that helps with a lot of other things that go on.
Nope, that's a good suggestion. Keith, is that, do you have that as a note on your plan right now, or is that just in the application information?
That was part of, that's on the plan, I hear.
It's a note on the, down below, right there.
You know my plan better than me.
Yeah, you're pointing to the right.
Yes, we mark an operation notes, we have those on there.
And again, I think we're gonna need just something back saying, here's how it went, here's the number of vendors, number.
If I don't give you a letter, I'm sure some of the neighbors will give you a letter.
Well, but we're asking you to do that as the applicant, because I think we need to understand and make sure, you know, this is the first time we're looking at something like this, and to everyone's point, it is in a sensitive area, so let's, let's make sure it's.
Like I said, we don't know if this is gonna happen this calendar year, though. We would like it to be, but it may not happen this summer.
Okay. Scott, you were asking me a question, I'm sorry, we had.
Whether you're gonna require screening or not along that property, there's a split rail fence there now.
Oh, on the split rail? Some type of temporary screening?
Is it visible right now, another person, the neighbor? Can you look right through to the, to the back of this property?
Probably be inclined to add that to the bond as opposed to installing right away, again, not knowing what's gonna happen here, I'm, rather than making large site changes before we know whether this is gonna be viable. And again, Scott, I think we would just say, you know, if there's immediate success here, there may be a lot of other things we need to revisit, too, about what the layout of the site is and things like that, but not knowing what it's gonna be right now, this at least lets us see what the experience is gonna be.
But if the permit's through September of 15, I guess if it's bonded, we can require it to be done sooner.
Right, well, and I, my assumption would be, again, depending on the experience as this is happening, if we feel there's a need to do something more immediately, either install the apron, install screen, whatever it happens to be, if there's success here, then I think we need to make sure that we're managing traffic, all kinds of things are gonna have to be.
As long as there's supervision to enact that, yeah.
Right, right. Okay. And anything else, did I miss anything in terms of what we're, what we're looking at in terms of changes here? Anyone, anyone else to speak? There wouldn't necessarily be another public hearing, depending on what happens, what we're talking about right now is if, if we were to go forward and approve this, that we would ask the applicant to come back and report to us on what happens during the first few events, so we can get a sense of it, and we're also talking about having for at least the first entire year, having a bond for some additional improvements or other changes that might be needed at the property depending on the success of them. I don't have a way of knowing whether or not we would need to actually come into a public hearing because we have to change the site plan, or whether what we're already talking about as far as what we would bond for would be sufficient, I'm just not sure. So yes, we would ask, we would expect the applicant to report back, and then the board would be able to make that, that call at that time. Did you wanna come back up, sir, or, okay?
So, as I said initially, this is already approved, there's no stopping of it.
It's not approved.
That would be saying they're gonna head for a year on a bond, so it doesn't matter what we say tonight, it's gonna go ahead.
Based, based on the comments we've received tonight, we've asked the applicant to make some changes to what they're doing.
Yes, after they're up and running.
Well, no, before they can have their first, before they can have their first event, we've asked them to make some changes, and then we're also saying, because we're not, we're not sure what this is going to look like, if, when it starts, we're asking them to be able to come back and report to us how this is going, what's happening at the site, so we know whether or not we need to make additional changes. This is, this is not a significant site plan change, this is a special permit, and it's the first one of its kind, so the board is unsure what the success is going to be or what this is gonna look like, so we're asking the applicant to work with us and come back and report in as they start these events, so we understand what it looks like.
So you are saying it's approved, they're going ahead?
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm speaking as if we've issued approval, the board has not approved anything yet, we're still in our discussion state, but assuming we close the public hearing tonight, which I think we probably will, then we would put it on for a decision, and again, I'm making the assumptions, assuming the board would approve this, then yes, when the first couple of events happen, that's what we would be asking the applicant to do. So we're speaking tonight as if it's approved, so the applicant understands what we would expect of them in the event that they receive the special permit.
So we would have no comeback of any sort, if it's going, it's going, like.
My, my hope and my expectation would be that if these events start and. My hope and my expectation would be that if these events start and there's issues, that you would certainly come back to the board and let us know. Absolutely, I would want you to let us know that. Because we would have the ability at that point to look at the special permit and to either tweak the conditions of it or make changes to what's happening.
Okay, I thought you just said to the gentleman there that there was no comeback there, that it was already a...
The gentleman asked me if we would have a public hearing. A public hearing for us is a very formal thing, and it has to be advertised and things like that.
Yes.
So we're not asking the applicant to come back into a formal public hearing at this time.
Okay.
I think what it means...
I feel like I'm not answering your question well.
You're not.
I think what it means is, in all probability, the applicant responding to the questions raised tonight, they would get the special permit, and you'd see what happened the first year. If it fails, the neighbors are happy, cause they'll close up and go away. If it's successful, and wildly successful, the question will be, how noisy is it? How many people pull in that ladies' driveway? How many people want to go in down the road? How many people park on your street? And those would all be legitimate complaints to bring back to the town board and the planning board to not renew the special permit.
Okay.
That's...
Right.
That's clear. As long as you know there's an outlet or something.
And I just wanna say again, we, what I was asking was not to wait until the end of the first year. I was asking after the first few events, which if they're weekend events, it would be within the first couple of weeks of the special permit being used.
Okay, because that is our summer as well. I'm saying it's been taken up with this. I'm not against business, I'm just saying it's just right at my door.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Keith, you have, there's gonna be a few conditions, and we need some time to prepare the resolution, so we would look to bring you back for a decision on August 5th.
That's fair.
So for the folks that were here tonight, the board will see the applicant again at our next meeting, which is August 5th, and it's at that time you would hear the discussion around the decision for the planning board, and if we make that decision, what the conditions of the decision would be. So a lot of the things we talked about tonight would actually be incorporated into the resolution documents, so you'd hear exactly what the requirements are. Okay. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you for all your help, and we'll see you in August.
Our next item on the agenda is a sketch plan review for the Fleet Weather amended site plan on Route 52. I was kind of enjoying the background noise, didn't you? We're commenting on the frog that...
It's a public hearing. I think he's up there.
Yeah, well, he wants to be heard.
Mark, you wanna give us a quick overview as we're loading up the plan?
This is the Fleet Weather...
I'm sorry, stay next to your mic for us. Thank you.
This is the Fleet Weather property. It's located on Route 52, across from the Raspberry Ridge subdivision. It's an existing wood frame structure, currently occupied by Fleet Weather. They sell weather, if you want a sunny day, you go in, you buy one. Now, everything's handled over the internet. They do mainly internet, it's information, weather information for nautical, marine, aviation, things like that. Scott and I, Scott met me out there. What they're asking us to do is, hey Matt, can you open up the architectural drawing first? We went in and I met the applicant. Can you rotate that? The building's pretty cut up. It's an older home, if you will. It's pretty compartmentalized, and what we're trying to do, Jeff has got a number of people, they're stuck in cubicles, they use a lot of computer graphics, they all have multiple monitors. It's pretty tight quarters. What happens is, this is the front of the house facing 52. There's a few additions on the house, some are at different levels. So what we did, we met out at the site, the applicant and I, there's an existing deck right here, it's a two-story deck that's actually on the back of the home, or building, I should say.
You can see that when you're driving eastbound, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a two-story deck, it's got massive stairway on it, it's a pretty sizable deck.
Okay.
What we were talking about was trying to open up some of these areas. There's multiple desks and equipment on each level. This is a kitchen area that's sorta on the second floor, there's some restrooms in here. So we're trying to come up with a way where we can open this up. So as I was in the back of the building staring at it, I thought, well, the best thing in my opinion, this is gabled, it's a reverse gable, meaning the ridge runs, say, perpendicular Route 52. We'd like to take this deck, remove it, and just complete this square, just box this off, if you will. We would wind up with a total of about 4,583 square feet of finished space. We're not looking to add employees, we're not looking to do anything other than provide a little bit more working room for the people who occupy. What we were gonna redo is, this would be a two-story addition, this would be a two-story addition, what we would do is, we would try to take this, the bathroom area and the restroom and the kitchen area, we'd like to open that up and put that on what is now the deck, so we can open up that area and try to...
Are you gonna eliminate the kitchen?
Well, we've not eliminated it, we create, we put it out into the back deck, so we can open it up, make it more, let's say, central.
Can I? Bottom button.
So what we would do is, we would probably open up the...
Bottom one.
So what we would do is take this, we'd open this area up and put it out back here, so this becomes more of a central area. This is right now the kitchen area, there's a restroom in here, it's not ADA, you can see it's pretty tight. There's also a small one here, that's, you know, your typical, I wanna call it a residential restroom, there's a shower in there. It's not really effective. These areas are really kinda worthless to them, so we're thinking, this is a bearing wall, as you can imagine. We're thinking about taking this out, opening it up, and moving some of these out here, so this becomes more of an open area. You'd have to be in it to appreciate it. We did these architectural plans to give you an idea, you know, why we're trying to do it. The other things that are a little haphazard here is the fact that the, this area here is at a lower level. You actually come into this building, you're down a few feet from this other area, it's kinda like a split level, but it's actually an addition that was put on the building a number of years ago. There is a basement under it, we're not planning on developing, although it could become a crawl space, only because the level, the level would work out better if we were...
So it's the bottom button?
Oh, it's the bottom? Oh, that's why. Okay. So this level here is actually a little, slightly higher, so we were thinking if we did, we just raise this up on block, it would only be a crawl space under here. There's already a crawl space under that portion, right there, and that's this area. So we would probably mimic that, only because it would bring everything to one level, and you're not, you're not having all these multiple levels inside.
Can you bring up the site plan?
So that's just the description of the building as it is, and why we're...
And again, you're not increasing or changing the occupancy?
No, there's, that's not the intent. This site is, everyone knows, is, I mean, the wetland is right there. It goes right behind this building, and it...
So you've got, you've got no way to add any additional parking? Cause I often see cars parked along the drive, I see them parked.
Yeah. I mean, Scott and I talked about, we could possibly know something here. You know, I talked to the applicant, he's not that interested in adding parking, he thinks he makes it work. They are 24/7 operation. The only time they really have an issue with parking is when there's a lag between people coming and people going. They...
How many people are there now?
I'm not sure, the number, I don't know, somewhere around 24 people, but they're never there at the same time. It says it's 24/7. And we never close, it's open around the clock, but it's more than half of our business coming to Asia.
So Max on site?
So Mark, can you just repeat, cause we're not gonna pick that up for the mics?
They have about 24 people, they're not there at the same time, they're there, you know, on a, I don't know what kinda lag, but there is like an hour to two-hour lag. Most of the business, as Jeff had mentioned, is to Asia. They basically take care of shipping, shipping lanes, correct? They do, they basically advise on shipping lanes and weather. So most of it is done, or all of it's done, over the computers, internet, telephone. They don't have customers that come, they don't have deliveries, there's no need for that.
I definitely sometimes see cars even parked up on the road or parked along the drive. Absolutely, I see that.
Parking is maxed out right now.
Yeah.
It's definitely maxed out.
The only thing is, and I told them this before we even got started, there's no way we're gonna be able to add any parking to this. We just don't have it, the wetland is right there, it would be a substantial permit to do it. It's not even a buffer, it's a wetland, so that's why we came here, to basically talk about it. This is the addition we're proposing, it's basically taking the deck and squaring off the back of the house. We're not impinging on the parking, you know, that area right now is, as I said, it's just a structure for the deck. This thing here, if anybody's wondering, I actually took a fire truck and I related it out. Unfortunately, we're working off of Gary Littor's survey.
Yeah, they'll have to back up.
He doesn't use AutoCAD, so we're trying to work with this, so...
Well, I mean, you're not proposing any change to the parking or to the pavement at all?
No.
No difference to that?
No.
So it's really just a matter of taking, is it the exact same footprint of the deck for the addition?
Yeah.
Or is there a couple feet here?
I don't actually know there. I don't think it comes out along the back, I mean, we could probably match it out, I mean, the way we drew it up, roughly...
Bring it in line with the others.
Yeah, we would do that, only because we could increase the gable, and then you wanna square it off.
Right.
And it'll actually look a little bit better on the back, because this is just a short little gable, it's kinda stubby, but if we go up and over the top, move the ridge to the back, then it creates just a straight out, open gable.
Are you gonna redo the whole outside of that, like all the siding on the house?
Probably have to do that along the back and the sides.
Okay.
I think we could terminate it aside.
I think as long as we're not increasing the occupancy of the site, cause it's, it's pretty tight right now.
They actually just outsourced two employees, who are gonna be working from over.
Okay. So, Michelle, the only other thing, this is probably non-conforming right now, pre-existing non-conforming, when we talk about putting the addition on, is there anything we need to...
Well, I mean, it's technically pre-existing non-conforming for the 100-yard setback, that's supposed to be along Route 52.
Okay.
So you've already got a deck in that location, which, and so technically you would, you would be increasing the non-conformity, however, I sort of think that that is a archaic rule in that location.
Right.
So, and it's pre-existing anyway, so it's already, it's already there.
Did they get a variance when they put on the other?
For the...
Prove to expand, when they did the first addition?
So if you didn't get a variance for the deck, you may need to go get a variance for converting the deck to an enclosed space? Is that what I'm hearing?
Wasn't it 100 or 50% expansion, though? Isn't that the way the code reads?
It's for the, it's for the 100-yard setback off, you're supposed to, yeah, from 52.
But I think Pam's gonna check.
Sorry, it's 100 foot, sorry.
When the addition was previously put on, they may have gotten it.
Oh, okay, all right.
So we just have to check the records to see.
We put the addition on the building about, I think, 12 or 14 years ago, and we went through the whole process at that time. I don't think you had, I don't think you went to the ZVA, I just remember the planning board, and it was because we were, it was already existing, it was already existing there, and we replaced an existing porch that had been converted not very well to...
So Mark, again, we're not gonna pick this up for the mics, can you just repeat for us?
What Jeff thinks is that they went to the planning board 12 to 14 years ago to enclose that, cause there was probably a porch at one point.
And maybe didn't get the ZVA approval?
It was already enclosed, just poorly.
It was already enclosed, it was already used, it was there when we bought the building, it was just very poorly insulated, and the other thing we did is we went up a story over it. It had a flat roof. And back before all this internet connectivity, we used that big satellite dish back on...
I remember that, yep.
Remember that? So then the reason we put the deck on was to house the satellite dishes. But we don't have satellite dishes anymore.
Gotcha.
So now the deck just sits there, you know, and we keep saying to the employees, well, why don't you go outside and eat lunch there, do whatever, nobody uses it, it's just there.
Okay.
So we're trying to make, the bathrooms are tiny, we like to get everybody together in the kitchen to eat, the kitchen is completely tiny, and we were gonna put in new cabinets or something, we said, you know, it's not gonna help if we can't get some space so people can sit in here and eat.
Okay.
So we're just trying to use the space a little better and make it more comfortable for people.
Okay. And I don't think we have any, I'm not hearing any objection anyway to that, but it's just a matter of making sure that we don't increase your current occupancy. I know I've said that like four times, but...
Back to your earlier question I had, what's the max amount of employees at one time in the building? Eight, 10?
Well, if we have a party, then we try to get them to walk.
I'm talking on a normal.
I don't know, I guess 15, 12, 15 people in between shift changes. And part of the reason we get the cars along the driveway is that people go in through the front of the building and they get lazy, they don't wanna park all the way in the back and then walk all the way around the front.
Okay.
And we're like, hey, you know, don't park in the driveway, cause then when they come to deliver water or something like that, it's a hassle.
Okay.
You know, I'm not there to flood.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I just didn't wanna keep having Mark have to repeat.
No, I appreciate that.
So my question would be, what's the next step? Since this is only sketch plan?
Right. So we need, we need an application from you, cause it is a site plan change.
Okay.
And I think we need to just confirm, Pam, whether we need a ZVA referral or not.
How many square feet is the...
The addition, how big is it?
The addition?
Oh, the addition? I don't know, it's total 4,583.
That's with, that's with the new addition, it's 4,583?
Correct. And based on the zoning, or based on the parking, I think it's two plus one for 300, and I think we come up with 18, which is currently 19.
No, no, just how many square feet is the addition?
I think it's 220, but it's two floors.
Okay, so 400 square feet?
Yeah.
440.
I mean, I think that's a minor...
I was gonna say, it's a minor.
It's such the minor...
But we only have a sketch plan right now.
Excuse me?
So we only have a sketch plan?
I know, but you could almost treat it like a letter application to convert an existing porch into a 400 square foot addition.
Without knowing whether or not the ZVA has approved?
No, no, and then that's subject to the verification that the ZVA had previously granted them the appropriate variance for the setback and/or expansion.
Okay.
I don't appreciate that. I'll plug.
So are you suggesting we make a motion without learning that, or to make a motion at our next meeting?
Well, it's either to make a motion subject to verification that the ZVA approvals Well, it's either make a motion subject to verification that the ZBA approvals were granted. You may have to go to ZBA. I don't know.
Okay.
But other than that, or you can have them come back next month when you know about the ZBA part.
Something you're gonna start right away?
Sorry?
Is something you're gonna do right away?
I- If you're anxious, as soon as possible. Yeah, if you were in there, the floor plans don't do it justice. There's boxes and you can imagine. The ladies are not happy with the bathrooms. Never are. We'd like to make them happy. We'd like them happy.
If someone wants to hop at the motion, that's fine.
Laurie, maybe, uh, one suggestion would be though, since, uh, you know, basically if, if, if it does get clogged up there for people parking, maybe, you know, addition of a couple of signs. So, I mean, I know it seems a little crazy to keep doing employees from parking there, but I'm just thinking in the event of a fire and, you know, forget their water truck. If the fire truck ain't get in, um, you know, that's-
Fire truck's gonna be on 52. They didn't get in that back parking lot.
Yeah, I don't think he's going back there.
They're gonna stay on 52.
Fire truck's gonna be on 52.
Well, I mean, they're, they're parking along the driveway, right? Out, out to 52?
They're occasionally parking on 52. Not often. Occasionally.
Wait a minute, I'm gonna volume mitigate it.
I agree, but that's why we just wanna make sure that we're not doing this to have more employees there at any given time. So, you know, it is what it is right now. I'm not, it, it is what it is, but, okay. So does someone wanna-
Okay, what? No, hold on.
Do you want me to phrase it to see if-
No, I, I thought someone from the board might do that, but I'll go ahead. Does someone wanna offer a motion to approve a minor site plan amendment for fleet weather to convert the existing two-story deck into a two-story enclosed, uh, addition to the building with sightlines along the existing sightlines of the building, so it's squared off, subject to confirmation that we have a zoning board approval for the 100-foot setback from the road?
And that addition is approximately 400 square feet?
Love 400.
Two stories?
440.
And that the addition, right, is-
Less than 500 square feet?
Correct.
Is as presented during the sketch plan review and is no more than 500 square feet? Are you making the motion?
I'm making the motion.
Okay, Jason's making the motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from Russ? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now you need to contact Pam to make sure that we don't need to bring you up to the zoning board.
And then the building's gonna send you ARB.
Okay. And then, so, so we would be approved of this board?
You're approved with the planning board.
Okay. And then if I'm not, let's say the ZBA is still open, I go just to ZBA?
Just to ZBA.
Not that, oh, then.
Right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Discussion, discussion items. Uh, the next item on our agenda is Pizza Village proposed pad for a walk-in cooler on Route 82. Hi.
Hi, everybody. My name's Anthony Skanga from Pizza Village. Apologize I didn't come prepared with an overhead, uh, display.
That's okay.
Uh, we're just proposing a minor site plan change, uh, to add a walk-in cooler to the rear of the building behind a, uh, behind the, the existing fence.
Okay. Is this, is this, you're replacing the cooler that's there? Or it's an extension of it? Or a second cooler?
It's a, it's a second cooler.
Okay.
Next to the, the existing cooler there.
Okay. Access from the building, from the other cooler?
From the building, yes. We'll be, we'll be cutting a hole in the rear of the building and, uh, there'll, there'll be, you know, plans for that and we'll get a building permit for that. But, uh, you know, we'll be cutting a, you know, a doorway next to the, uh, in the rear of the building for access to it.
Um, do we have? Ask and you shall receive. Thank you. You gave us the proposed drawing. Thank you. And it's definitely, it's, it's completely behind the existing fence?
Yes, ma'am.
Or you have to extend the existing fence?
No, it's completely behind that existing fence. You can't see it at all.
Okay. Is there anything else there now that you're moving to another location?
There's nothing to be moved there now.
It's, it's just open area right now?
It's open area.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments from board members? Is there any addition, aside from the door that you're cutting into the, and no addition to the building itself?
No.
Scott, is there any issues with this?
Any, anything else we need to consider? Michelle, Brendan, I don't see any. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a minor site plan amendment for the addition of a second cooler at the Pizza Village site?
So moved.
Based on the sketch plan presented to us within and behind the fence area?
So moved.
So moved. I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for the Muse at Hopewell, 68-unit workforce housing on Route 82.
Good evening, Chairman woman G., members of the board, Ken Carney from, uh, the Carney Realty Group. I'm here with, uh, Jeff Contamo, Dawn McKenzie from Insight, and my son and partner, Sean Carney. Uh, we've submitted, uh, preliminary documents, a package of preliminary documents. Uh, we've advanced the plan. Uh, as you know, we've been in front of the board now, uh, for, I don't know how many times, four times or so, and the plan has evolved. I think we've made, uh, good progress. So we're here tonight to discuss, uh, the next steps. So at that, uh, I'll turn it over to Jeff Contamo. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, Dawn McKenzie from my office is here, um, loading up the computer, but as she does that, I'll just walk through, um, our submission back to the board. As a board, we'll recall, uh, we discussed the layout, um, which we looked at alternatives for our entrance location. And based on input from the last meeting, we've advanced the plan substantially by, um, submitting a complete set of preliminary documents, as Ken said. Uh, we've submitted site plans, water sewer reports, stormwater reports. We've revised and updated our full AF and our environmental assessment. Uh, we've provided vehicle maneuvering plans, a parking analysis, and then submitted supporting documents from our other consultants, which included traffic from Phil Greeley, uh, threatened endangered species by Ecological Solutions. We've also further developed the colored elevation of the townhouse unit, which will face Route 52, as the board had requested. Uh, we are working on, uh, two other items, which we noted, um, for a little later in the procedure to, to further the detailed discussion, and that is the visual analysis from Route 82 and the lighting plan, which, which we'll, um, be submitting next go-around. This evening, we'd like to discuss advancing the project procedurally. As the board may be aware, um, our use as a workforce housing project is subject to a special use permit. In your code, your zoning code, uh, chapter 194, section 19.1 includes a very specific procedure for this type of special use permit application. And, um, we believe we're at the point where we've submitted the initial application paperwork and, in our opinion, go on beyond that. And such, we would request the board this evening consider referring us to the town board. Um, the way the procedure is written, we understand that the town board has to, um, acknowledge the suitability of the site for the application of special use permit. Then we come back and get into detailed site plan and, and a couple public hearings with both boards. So, um, that's our goal this evening.
Okay. And Tom, did, did we not get to that point with the last application with the town board? Or does it, does it still need to be referred back?
The last time, we were actually amending the zoning ordinance, so things were a little, uh, convoluted at the time.
Okay.
So, um, the, the applicant's representative has spoken correctly, obviously, is that once you have a working site plan that you're, you know, feel is, uh, in other parlance, would be ready for public review. So at this juncture, what you would do is refer to the town board. Uh, there's two steps with the town board. The first referral to the town board is for them to merely acknowledge that they're okay with you continuing your review with this particular site. Uh, they then have to, uh, later on in the process, hold their own public hearing and agree to grant the special permit, but we're not to that point. So what the applicant's asking is number one, send it over to the town board and say to the town board, "Are you okay with us going forward?" Number two, at this juncture, the, the ordinance also says that you would refer it to any agency under the general municipal law to whom referral has to be made. That would be the county planning board is really the main agency because we're more than 500 feet from the municipal boundaries, so we don't have to send it to adjoining municipalities. So they would be two steps, uh, that would be requested.
Okay. As far as, um, at that point then, are we on hold? We're paused until the town board comes back and says, "Yes, this is a suitable-"
No, actually, this, this section of law envisions at the applicant's own risk is that you can, uh, you can approve it, but you could go through the public hearing process at their own risk. I mean, that is provided for in this section of the ordinance.
Okay. In advance of the town board's decision that it's a-
Correct.
Okay. So aside from the visual renderings and the lighting plan, which you said you will be submitting, is there anything else that, that we're missing? I guess, Brendan, let me, let's start with you. Anything from a traffic perspective? Are we comfortable with what we have in hand right now?
Had some minor comments, uh, nothing earth-shattering, uh, a couple comments on the, the vehicle movement plans.
We had the parking by building now. I saw that came in with the shading that was easier to understand. Thank you.
Basically, they were, uh, I probably even, I think my previous comment might have caused, uh, me to have another comment, but the, those vehicle tracking plans should be incorporated right into the plan set.
We saw it.
And, uh, and, you know, the details of the design vehicles included, uh, with the, with the tracking plans. Um, this site now has an emergency access. We just asked the applicant to extend the, uh, the vehicle tracking through that, uh, through that emergency access. Uh, asked them to take a look at the site distance at, that emergency access, just to make sure there's a suitable site distance there.
Nothing that would stop us from referring over to the town board?
No.
Okay. Michelle, how about from AKR?
Um, the only outstanding things are the, obviously, what Jeff already spoke to, which is the visual renderings and then the lighting plan. And actually, one of the changes on the project is the fact that there's now a stormwater, um, feature in front of the, um, townhomes. So we were talking about understanding, having an understanding of the landscaping there, which also can be done as part of the site plan, but that's something else that we, um, you know, and I know they provided some information about that, but we wanted to see it with the visual renderings. And then the applicant did update the habitat suitability assessment report for the project. Um, I, do you know if they've submitted that to DEC for review?
Um, I'm not sure if he has, but we, we will be talking to him about that.
Yeah, that would be great.
I think Pam followed today?
If they did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, cause and, just to verify that anything that they've already proposed as far as mitigation is still, and also because we have slightly more disturbance on the site. So you just wanna just cross that T and dot that I.
I had a note on the floodplain forest. Is that something that's also reviewed by the DEC? Or is that part of-
Yes, cause there's a, there's a habitat on the site, part of the site that they're actually not disturbing, which is floodplain forest.
Yeah, these, these two corners down in here.
Okay.
And that's a, that's a habitat of statewide significance, so that's also on their list. And then as far as Seeker is concerned, um, I don't believe we've reaffirmed our intention to be lead agency, so I don't know if procedurally we just wanna do that so that you're still gonna be lead, lead agency on this particular application.
Okay. And I'm assuming DEC or the lighting plan, visual renderings, that's not gonna cause us to not go to the town at this point?
No.
Not refer to the town, I should say. Okay. Okay. And then Larry, from your office, do we have-
Uh, you know, as Jeff mentioned, he put together a pretty detailed sub, preliminary submittal. Um, I think he did a great job in, in advancing the plan, you know, in a logical, um, a logical manner. 90% of our comments are really just developing a checklist so that he's, as he continues to provide us more information, we remember to, to make sure we, we pay attention to certain things. The other 10% is probably just, you know, having a fresh set of eyes looking at it for, you know, we picked up a couple of things that hopefully are helpful. Um, I would like to bring up two, two comments that, uh, I'd just like to highlight for Jeff. And, um, one of them is the, uh, the fact that you do have to get a wetland permit.
Correct.
Um, so I think that means that DEC's eyes are gonna be on the SWIP.
They, they have the option at that point, you know.
Yeah, so I-
They may.
And, and the only reason I bring that up, I'd like to get them, get that behind us.
I understand.
So when you and, you and I finish up the SWIP, we know it's done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, I, I don't know if you did the soil testing yet? Any soil? Were you relying, relying on previous?
No, we, we won't, we are not, we, we have looked at previous testing to help us with our preliminary design.
Yeah.
We will be performing site-specific testing in accordance with the design manual.
So again, my suggestion there would be just, you know, I, I know your standards. I know you're gonna wanna do what's right. Let's make sure that what you're thinking out there, you really got. So maybe sort of the, so the, other than those, but, but again, nothing, nothing relative to, uh, to town board.
Okay.
Issues I, I, I don't see any reason why this can't continue to move forward the way it's moving.
Okay. And then I just had a couple of other notes. Did we include the office in, um, and I can't remember if it's building four or building five. Is that included in EAF now?
Yes, it is. Larry pointed out, um, correctly that our design flow calculation for water and sewer did not include this, the, the office. The office will contribute its 12 gallons a day per employee, and there might be two employees. We're talking about 24 gallons a day. We will correct that in both our water sewer report, um, and on the EAF. But it really doesn't affect the significant figures. We're talking about 13,000 gallons a day. Um, we, we did, um, take it into consideration. When we looked at parking, that would be the other concern. Um, when we talked to Ken about what the parking demand would be for that. So we have taken it into consideration.
Okay. And then, and forgive me if we already addressed this. Do we, did we address fire flow? I know we talked about town water and sewer-
We have some comments in there on, on fire flow. Again, he's, he, when Jeff puts together his technical, uh, detail relative to the water supply and the, and the sewage disposal, I'm sure those calculations will, will be in there.
Okay. And then I think the only other comment was now that we have, um, something up towards 82, um, in front of the town, or I guess I can't tell if it's in front of or behind, but, um, between the townhomes and 82, it looked like you had some drainage features now.
Yeah, we, we have, we have two stormwater practices, which are surface practices, infiltration above ground. One here and one here. Um, they will be landscaped. We are working on the landscaping advancement as part of the visual analysis.
Okay.
And we'll show you what, what that will look like.
Okay. And more than what it will look like, if it's going to be wet, or if it's going to be something that people shouldn't be walking through or something like that, we'd wanna make sure that there's an appropriate, um, whether it's a split rail fence or whatever is appropriate there to make sure that folks coming out of their townhome to, towards the back of, I'm gonna, I don't know whether I call it, again, the back or the front, but coming out of their townhome, heading towards 82, especially if there's children and things like that. We don't want people going into places where they, there could be, um, problems during areas that shouldn't be.
Yeah, these are both, these are both infiltration practices, so they're intended to be dry.
Okay.
Through the, unless it's immediately after heavy rainfall. But we, we can and will talk some more about that and talk about what the state recommended standards are for that. And we'll get you those details as we advance the details.
Okay.
We, we agree with Jeff that the, um, the flows associated with the office are, are minor. It's just really a matter of correction to make sure when we're done with the EAF, it's correct. Um, but there were a couple comments, uh, in there relative to the water supply and the sewage disposal. We ask that the main be extended across the front of the property. We should probably get that on the table, make sure that we're all in the same cage with that. And that we're looking for those, um, uh, components of the infrastructure to be included in an easement and offered to the town in an irrevocable offer session in case the town ever wants to, um, acquire them from, from the developer. Would be not only the main, but also the, the sewage lift station and, um, I don't know whether we want the meter we want the meter pit or not, but I think, I think the meter pit should be on town property anyway, because it's going to be accessed by the town.
We'll have access, but it could be within that easement.
And within the easement zone, okay.
Yeah, we can discuss those details.
Yeah, they'll have to be detailed.
Okay.
And then is there, are you bringing fill or removing fill from the site?
Yeah, we haven't, what we said in our, in our environmental write-up, originally, they, the, the previous application was talking about some export in, in the order of 4,000 yards. We believe our export is going to be less than that. We're running our earthwork right now, now that we have all the final grades established, so we'll be able to give you better numbers on the earthwork.
But you're going to be over the 375, so you're probably going to need the special number.
We will be over the 375, yes.
Okay. So do I have a motion from the board to reaffirm our intention to be lead agent?
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then Michelle, do we need to specifically, to Tom's point, recirculate now to Duchess County?
No, that's a referral under the general municipal law.
A referral, okay.
It's not part of the supervision.
Did you already submit the Duchess County annual application or?
Yeah, we have to.
We did get comments from Duchess County, so I'm assuming that we're.
Under the current plan or?
No, the current, it was actually the previous plan, because they, they commented, if you recall, on eliminating.
Similar enough that we would refer. Say it again?
You have to refer the current.
Okay. All right. And then do I have just a motion to refer to the town board? Do I have a motion to refer this applicant to the town board for the viability of their permit?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Great, thank you very much. We, we do plan on, just, just to let the board know, Ken happens to be a risk taker, and I do think we're going to be parallel processing comments to some of the open issues and getting the visual rendering and being submitting back to your board while we work with the town board.
Okay, so pause on that thought for a second. Michelle, is there anything that would stop us from setting public hearing right now if the applicant is, understands that it's subject to a town board?
Just so we don't have the visuals, yeah, right, and probably the media goes for the.
They would have to be submitted at least 15 days prior?
Yeah, we, we actually would like to develop some of that, because we think that's going to be very supportive of what we're doing. So that is one of the comments that we would like to respond to, resubmit to the board and get on an upcoming meeting. We'll check on schedule.
So do you want us to set a public hearing now, and as long as you submitted all of that at least 15 days prior, you'd be fine? Or would you rather come back to us for another discussion before we set a public hearing, knowing you have a 25-day lead time for your advertising?
Yeah, we're, I'm not sure when we're going to have it all done, so it'll probably be better if we submit it, come back and discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Very good. Then is there anything else that you wanted to do with the board tonight, or any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. What? Is it the frog? Is it still the frog?
Yeah, they have comments, obviously.
All right. The cricket's chirping as there was a lull in the conversation. I know. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for the Hopewell Animal Hospital amended site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
You too. It's, it's in, there's more than one now, right?
Oh, yeah, that's going to be all.
Okay. Is it, what, is it like pouring rain outside? Is that the problem? Are they just all trying to get in warm? All right.
It's, it's a normal thing. Summertime, that's what you do.
Well, it's funny, until you said something, I didn't even notice it from here that like 24 hours a day.
Oh, yeah.
But you're right, we are indoors, we shouldn't be hearing that right now. Oh, man.
It's like we have windows.
Hello.
Yeah, they gave me an elevation to take it, it's about a foot up in elevation, 1233.
Is there a remote?
Uh, say it again.
Is there a remote for that or? No.
Um, no.
No, so I should go to the page?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. Do I have the FAB? Yes. I think I, did I put it back in the folder or did I keep it? Do you want me to send them back over? I know, Pam knows me well. I tend to abscond with things. Abscond with them, write on them.
Mm-hmm. I can understand that.
Hi, Margaret McManus from Chase and Company. Excuse me. That's not a very good picture.
Okay.
We've made some substantial changes or increased our package to the town. This is, I believe, a complete package.
Okay.
The only thing that I do not have is the revised renderings of the architecture, which I will get and bring to the town tomorrow.
Okay, okay. So walk us through any changes since the last time we saw this, and if you don't mind when you do that, I, I can't remember exactly how we were accessing the building. I know there's kind of a ramp structure and then another front.
I do have a, a laser pointer in here, which will make things a lot easier.
Okay. John's going to start renting his.
Got it. Yeah.
Now come the cricket.
This one worked when I left it up.
There we go, okay.
Maybe. That might have been me.
Oh, I saw it for a second.
That might have been me.
Oh.
I'm just showing you, this one does work.
Okay. If you want to use John's.
It's the bottom button. That's fine.
Um, this is the existing, well, no, this is the existing building and this is the addition.
Okay.
And the renderings actually show an access point here, which was going to be the main access. And in order to accommodate the handicap access, we, we built a ramp that comes from the handicap all the way around to this, which will be now the main entrance. And then there's also an entrance, you know, with the, just a few steps.
Okay. So there's no other door into the building as they come around the ramp or?
Well, there's a door back here, but it's really, would be accessed to the back of the building, and that would be staff.
Okay.
And that would bring them to this building over here. So in order to create the ramp, we, we went this way.
Okay, so they have to navigate the full U to get down to the actual customer entrance?
To get, yes, because the building has to be set above the floodplain, so there's a substantial, would be like six steps, so you need the length in order to get.
Enough run on the ramp that it's not a huge incline, okay. Okay.
We, we have a count of 35 spots, but we're going to be building 31 and banking four of them.
Okay. And where are the land bank spots?
They're over here.
In the back?
In the back. The, the garbage refuge is here now, it would need to be moved back if those spots were ever built.
Okay.
It's the primary septic area, secondary septic area, there's an existing well that will be utilized. The entrance to the, to, is the existing entrance. We did get comment that we may want to look at aligning it with, with the entrance to the gas station, which is across the street. It, it's almost lined up, but we can look at, at centering that, and that's something that the DOT, the DOT would ask for also. We did make some additions based on the comments that we received. during construction to show that it could turn around. We need to extend a little bit of the pavement down this end for the rear truck wheels. We also showed the garbage truck in the during construction and post-construction configuration.
Brendan, that was the big truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is it likely they would pull in?
This one, yeah, this they probably would.
Maybe.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So they can turn around if they do pull in.
Okay.
Isn't there a standard turnaround, an appendix A or whatever for, for fire code? Isn't there a standard turnaround for?
It's a longer than, than this.
They give you options.
There are options.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know you did the auto turn, but I would think you'd want to demonstrate your meeting that, those appendix requirements.
Yeah.
The alternative would be.
It just gives you the geometry that, you know.
Yes, the alternative.
And then run your auto turn in that geometry and demonstrate, yeah.
Right. And they would just make it larger.
Yeah. And I don't believe it always necessarily has to be paved either. It has to be some kind of surface, but wouldn't necessarily have to be paved, it could be gravel maybe.
Okay. Do we have a lighting plan from you?
Yes, there is a lighting plan.
I reviewed it.
You've reviewed it, okay.
Yeah, it's, um, they have.
That's all right, we're, yeah, we're.
They have lantern-type fixtures, approximately 14 feet tall. The fixtures would be full cutoff and dark sky friendly, and the proposed lighting levels would be consistent with the Duchess County Greenway connections, very low lighting levels. They're about 14 feet tall, they've got a, a cap that looks almost like a ship length, not, well, kind of like a little, like, like a hat, actually.
Okay.
Which is architectural.
Nice. Michelle, I also had a note here on the habitat review.
Yeah, they, I guess you have a biologist that's currently looking at the, the, the project's potential to impact and danger threatened rare species, because there was correspondence from New York State Heritage Program regarding the site's potential to contain threatened or endangered species. So they said that the, a letter report would be submitted to the town upon completion, so I guess they're waiting on that information. And then my only other comment was we, we need to declare our intent to be lead agency because they're going to need a DOT permit, and also potentially New York State DEC, US Fish and Wildlife, and Duchess County. And then also, sorry, ARB, I don't know if it's been to the ARB yet or not.
I don't think, I have, I don't think we referred it over yet. Okay. All right. And I'm sorry, I know you've told us this before, but there's, is there a kennel service here, or is it just overnight would only be for surgeries or something?
The only night, only all is for surgeries, that's the only.
Okay. All right. Questions or comments from board members?
Will that mean somebody will be staying, staying overnight too?
Excuse me?
Does somebody, will somebody stay overnight?
There is an accessory apartment above the existing building. The person who rents it is a technician that doesn't work for the doctor, but does check on the animals during the evening and late at night hours.
Okay.
And that would, that accessory apartment is planned, we're planning on keeping the accessory.
Okay. No, that's all right. Brendan, anything else from your end?
If they're 10 feet above, I'm not worried about.
I think one of the things we talked about before was, since the, where the main entrance is, is maybe providing like a hatched area instead of a parking spot, leading into where, I'm not going to draw on, but where that main doorway is, where the stairs, since, you know, most of the, most of the, most of the customers are probably going to take that short route and the staircase into the building.
Yes.
You know, cars are all lined up there, people, animals and dogs.
Like straight, a spot.
So just maybe straight to half spot for?
So you might eliminate one more parking spot, I don't know if that's a hardship.
Or even a half spot to have a five-foot or whatever walkway there.
I think it's fine to eliminate each spot.
Okay.
Parking.
Okay. Are we land banking too few or?
We're land banking four. I think we talked about this with the doctor, and he wanted the 30, around 30 spaces, so now we have 30, we have 31 spaces, so.
Okay.
The only other thing, since it, I mean, since it is an expansion, you know, we, we would just ask that you just give a, some, some statement when you respond back in terms of, you know, the number of employees and the anticipated number of patients.
Brendan, use the mic.
Just so we get an idea of, an idea of the, the traffic. I mean, it's, I know the difference between what's out there and what's going to happen, it's going to be pretty small, but just so we have it for the record.
Actually, did have them do that today at work, and I have the numbers, so I can.
Just so they, that would be great.
It, it is insignificant, it's about 13 additional trucks.
We just want to make sure everything comes through the planning office so we.
Yes.
That's it on my end, Laurie.
Okay. Michelle, I know you went over a couple of things, anything else from your end? We'll circle back to the lead agency and the referral to ARB. Joe and?
Yeah, we have, I've been talking a little bit with Margaret offline. She mentioned that there's a floodplain on the property, they've done some calculation and come up with an elevation, but for the town's purpose and doing the floodplain permit, we're going to need somebody to.
We'll write.
Write up a certificate on that and state what you found. There is just under an acre of disturbance, and we've also talked about trying to make sure that stays under an acre. They are planning a full, you know, site phasing and erosion plan, but they're trying to keep everything under an acre so that it doesn't trigger a full SWIP.
I did do the calculation by taking out the area of pavement that will remain, and we're at like .9, which is really much more reasonable than that .9.
Yeah, so I guess just show that in the next.
Yeah. I did go through the letter, I mean, there's really all of the items could be addressed.
And as far as the water, that's not going to rise to the level of being a public water supply?
I believe it will be a public water.
You believe it will be?
I believe it will, because it'll be a non-transient public water.
Because I know in that area, there's some, there's some issues in that area, so.
They already have a substantial water system, water treatment system, so.
Okay. I think he mentioned that at a previous meeting, that they're treating for the.
We'll provide whatever additional treatments necessary, so we'll.
Okay.
Health forms coming out on Friday or Thursday to do deeps, so we can talk to them then.
Scott, anything else from your end?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to declare our intent to be lead agency for the Hopewell Animal Hospital amended site plan?
Some move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we'll refer you to the ARB, so that you get your renderings reviewed. Pam, do we have everything we need for that in hand, or do we need the, the renderings?
You need the new renderings.
Need the new ones?
I'll get them to you.
Okay, am I, am I too soon to refer to the ARB then? Okay. Okay.
Laurie, was there, I'm looking at the, the fire comments again, and they, again, they refer back to that June 3rd. I don't know if you still have it in front of you, sorry.
We'll pause momentarily.
All right.
Bear with us one second. Do you have your, your FAB Fire Advisory Board comments?
I do not.
Okay, so bear with us here one second.
No, we haven't been to that.
Under Hopewell Animal Hospital, it says refer to June 3rd, 2014 meeting notes.
I have a feeling there's a lot of copy and pasting there.
Oh, okay.
Because it says the same thing on every single one.
All right, gotcha. Okay. All right.
So I need to go to the fire.
You need to go to the Fire Advisory Board. So we'll send you there too.
They went on the.
Oh. Okay.
You did?
I wasn't there.
That's, that's not unusual, they usually just review plans.
You might have just done an initial review, and that was probably before the changes to this. That was before this full submittal.
Jason, you want to read them off?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right then. No apartment should be built in the main building.
We're not proposing.
Install a sprinkler system, a central alarm station should be installed. The FAB, and we, we can make sure you get a copy of this as well, the FAB requires a knock box system, Knox box system to be installed. MSDS information on any hazardous material that may be used or stored on site is required to be readily available to the fire department. I don't know if you have any hazardous materials with, with this operation, but we just want to check with the doctor.
And they have oxygen, right?
Yeah, and find out. And then the refuse enclosures must be fireproof or at least 30 feet from all structures.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll, we'll get you a copy of those comments, I know I'm just reading them quickly, but just to give you a feel.
I'll, I'll get in touch with the.
Do we need to wait for the 30 days cycle before we set the public hearing or do we just have to make sure the public hearing would go out or would be set for the circulation? So as long as we go out to, what do you think, the first meeting in September for public hearing?
All right.
That means that you have to circulate and get your, your package together to circulate to all the interested and involved agencies and you have to get your advertising done at least 25 days prior. And any other changes you want to submit to the plan have to be in at least 15 days prior. And our first meeting in September is September 2nd. Did I say that right? Yes, September 2nd?
Great.
So are, does that, from a timing perspective, you. It gives you about two weeks to make sure you get the lead agency circulated, the interested and involved agency circulation.
The only thing is if the ETR. And the, the next meeting would be.
After the 2nd of September would be the 16th of September.
Why don't we make it the 16th of September?
Okay. Alright, so do I have a motion to schedule Hopewell Animal Hospital amended site plan for public hearing on September 16th?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I just ask, work with Michelle, work with the planning office to make sure we get all the circulations done.
Yep, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Hopewell Sports Dome site plan on Route 52.
Late night for everybody.
It sounded like it started over there and danced over here, is it just? I would never have noticed it until something.
Just put that one over there for me.
Okay.
I'm just saying, good evening, everybody, Steve Feinstein for the applicant. Crystal, Krista Pine will be here to, Lepine will be here to answer any questions. We have some revised materials that are a little bit in progress, but we're, we're well on our way on those. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Chris for some specific presentation.
Good evening, Chris Lepine with the Chays and Companies. We, we made a semittal for the dome back in June and we had received some informal comments from the town planning consultants. We are in the process of addressing those comments we received, but at the same time, we also met with the Fire Advisory Board and received a, a number of comments from them as well that have kind of refined the design of the, the site here and that we wanted to share with you this evening just to kind of keep you up to speed with what we're, we've been doing. The former plan that was before the town showed the inflation units in the front of the building.
Right.
It also showed parking along the front of the building as well. There was a decision made to place the inflation units in the rear of the building and relocate the parking in the front and disperse it kind of along the parking aisles that are perpendicular to the dome there. Similar to the orthopedic project earlier tonight, we had received some initial feedback already from residents about the drainage concerns offsite. One of the proposals that was discussed was along the front of the property utilizing a smaller parking space than nine by 18, which we had discussed earlier. That would allow us to accommodate the original parking we had proposed and all the parking along the front of the building. One of the requests that the Fire Advisory Board was to eliminate the parking along the front of the building, they wanted a separate fire access aisle there and they wanted uninterrupted space in the event that there was a fire.
I think that makes sense.
The other, the other thing that that did for us by narrowing down the 10 foot to nine foot wide is it also provided us the opportunity to enlarge the bio retention areas at the end of each of the parking spaces, which are on the north side. So that provided a little bit more volume for the runoff.
So, so, and I'm, I'm sorry, did you go to nine by 18 or nine by 20?
Uh, they went to nine by 18.
Okay.
But that's only in the front?
Only in the front is what we, we talked about.
And how, how many, how many spaces? Give or take?
Give or.
That's fine.
Two 12.
Okay.
Overall, there's 800 between the property and what they're leasing from the neighborhood. So we've got a drop off area now in the front of the building, which we didn't have before to accommodate up the three cars, that's what the Fire Advisory Board felt comfortable with, up to three cars. There's some other minor tweaks here, they've asked for three hydrants along the front of the dome and they've also asked for three hydrants along the rear of the dome.
And are those going to provide fire flow directly inside the building?
Directly inside the building, they asked for a five inch Siamese connection in the northeast corner of the building.
Okay.
They've also asked for two separate doors, one on the northeast side and one on the southeast side to be solely dedicated for emergency access.
Okay.
Double doors they've asked for. You know, it's a little detailed, but it just keeps me up to speed with it. They've asked for a minimum access around the building between 26 to 30 feet for their fire trucks.
I'm sorry, when you say northeast, can you just point, because to me, there's a north and east and west and a south, so I'm not sure what northeast would be.
Doesn't start renting that job.
You know, I went out to my car and got something, I just didn't get it. Over here, then on the side.
Okay, so north side and south side, Victoria, okay. So inside the building, the, the arched structure is towards the east side?
Talking about the retail space?
The retail space, the arched structure inside the building.
It's on, it's right here.
It's right there, so you have the emergency exits closer to that?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's where they also wanted the Siamese connection as well, closer to that.
Alright.
The other issue.
And you went over that there's a restaurant on the second floor as well as viewing up on the third level of that?
Yes, where they have the dining cages.
Okay. Okay.
The other issue that's been brought to our attention, you know, Lake City came to, I guess, representatives of the town and brought up the drainage issue. So that's been conveyed to, to the design team here. And what we're looking at. And it's brought the old plan here, but just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at here, IBM was originally built. In the southeast corner, there were, I'm sorry, southwest corner, west of the existing utility building, they had built some ponds on the, in the property. What we learned was the total drainage area that it was sized for was never diverted there. So these ponds actually have more capacity than what they were. They have more capacity available today than what they're being used for.
Okay.
So one of the suggestions was, could we divert some of the runoff that's currently going northern, in a northern direction towards Lake City and send it to the west as it was originally proposed? So we've obtained copies of the original records and we are in the process of analyzing that to determine the acreage that we can divert there. We are working currently with the owner of the property because currently right now, we only have under contract the front portion. So we would need their permission to make these modifications.
Okay.
But we think it's for the benefit of the project.
Can you, can you, in rough numbers aside, just give us a sense of, are you thinking it would take half your drainage, a quarter of your drainage?
I'm thinking 10 acres in that neighborhood, we're going to be able to divert and that's going to be predominantly in the rear of the property. Does, right now.
And how many acres do you need to attenuate?
Well, it's not a matter of how much we can attenuate, we're, the design as it is meets the intent of the, this kind of goes back to orthopedics again.
I'm just trying to get a sense, do you, do you have 100 acres and this will take 10, do you have 100 acres, do you have 50 acres?
Do you mean of the overall watershed area? Is that what you're talking about? So they've got 160 acres.
That's the question, I'm, why, I'm sorry, it's getting late.
So it's probably, say, of the overall watershed, say it's 10% of the watershed that is being diverted? Which is.
No, but that or pond was to take an original percentage, let's start with that. Do you know what that, what number was?
It was based on a flow rate.
Right, but I mean, you could back into an acreage that went there.
Yeah, well, it's 10 acres is what it comes out to is what we.
Of that entire site, that's what was originally designed, I think it was more than that.
No, no, what I'm, what I'm backing into is we're backing into the flow rate, not the actual watershed, we only have flow rates to work with.
Okay.
So what that equates to is we can divert 10 acres, which currently goes towards Route 52.
Okay.
We could divert towards that pond.
Okay.
I can't tell you what it is as part of that because I wasn't in the time report.
Okay. Okay, but we'll, we'll go through all that, we'll, we'll get into all of that.
But the good thing is you're diverting runoff that's currently being discharged towards Lake City. I understand what you're asking, it's just that the content.
I'm just asking for a ballpark, is it 10% of your?
I'd say 10% overall, just looking at.
I'm sure we're going to get to a point where we're going to lay that out very clearly.
I just wanted to get a sense, was it half?
We'll get to that point.
Quarter, you know, 10% is good.
We'll get to that point.
That's all.
We gotta work backwards to do, the original design only has numbers, like flow rates, it doesn't have acreage or anything, so we're working backwards to reproduce that.
I'm, I'm not trying to lock you down, I just wanted to get a sense of, is this something that's going to take, you know, half the drainage from the property or, so 10% is good enough, if it's eight, if it's 12, if it's whatever, that's fine, I just wanted a sense of it.
Roughly in that ballpark.
Okay.
As I recall the topology on that site, the far back is the highest end, it came over from what's now called the east complex. And ran along the road in the west complex, then came downhill towards the building, which is still there. I can't remember the number of it. And then it would come back up to Route 52. It was, it was like, the, the last grade beforehand was below the road.
Unless they were here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why the ponds are so deep and the drainage structures are so deep there.
Thank you. Cause I'm just saying that the water doesn't go from the property onto 52 across.
I think there's another point that you might want to make, is, is that when they designed the ponds, there was some excess capacity built into those ponds for future development that never took place.
Correct.
Some on your piece and some on the rear piece, that you're going to factor in.
And that's the, that's why I'm saying that the original, what it was originally designed for, that's currently what's not flowing to it. So it's got the excess capacity right now and our thought process is to divert a portion of the runoff that's currently going to Route 52 towards the west side of the site.
It doesn't actually get to 52, does it, it's the, the road where it dips down.
No, it, it, the, there is a 48 inch pipe that flows to the north. It currently is proposed to flow underneath the dome project, it conveys runoff from the rear of the property and it discharges into these front ponds. And then it's conveyed over to Route 52. This, the water from the rear, it's, it's.
What?
And then over to the gilder sleeve.
Yeah. Theoretically, if, you know, if we were designing this today, you wouldn't, you wouldn't run a pipe that length, you'd, you'd bring it to the low, you'd bring it to your closest low point. I, I can't explain why. But heads forth, that's why, you know, this isn't receiving the acreage that it was originally designed for. What they seem to build it for wasn't what it was designed for, so. That's kind of the biggest issue right now is the drainage, because we're trying to divert as much as we can for this project. I've gone through the, let's see, we've gone through the drainage, we've gone through the fire.
We also looked at pedestrian access, right?
Pedestrian access has been modified, instead of having a direct connection to John J High School, we are extending the connection out to Route 52. There's now a crosswalk that comes across the main access road, up along the pond and along 52 to the end of the property. Why would you still not have access to John J?
That still provides access to John J.
I understand that, I'm wondering.
Well, the other way it came to behind the school, I mean, I don't think it was.
I don't know, I'm just, yeah.
You know, plus, plus you're going to have people from here walking to Dunkin' Donuts and vice versa and all that, so I think this lays out.
But it keeps them up on a sidewalk, not actually walking next to the highway.
Well, we'll be.
Oh, there's going to be a sidewalk.
There'll be a sidewalk there. The, the.
There'll be a sidewalk.
But it'll be a sidewalk, it won't be walking on the sidewalk.
Can have a sidewalk on the other side.
So will the sidewalk go right into?
Well, it'll just go to the, it'll go to the end of the property.
It'll go to the end of the property. Just the end of the property. That's kind of where we are in terms of the progression of these drawings, where if, you know, there's still some tweaks we're making with regards to the drainage, the kind of adjustments and comments that were generated by the town engineer. But we wanted to present to you tonight where we are and just kind of bring you up this, the biggest change being the inflation units coming to the rear of the building and elimination of the parking here and that, you know.
Did that do anything to the interior plans?
I'm sorry?
Did that do anything to the interior plans, did that change?
No. So what we're, we're here tonight to ask for is because we're going to be making a submission very shortly through town.
We've got to intercept.
If we could schedule a public hearing for this for August 19th for the subdivision and the site plan application.
Okay. Do we have everything in hand that we would need for that? Or do you have additional information?
We would be submitting this 15 days prior to meeting, and we're looking to make the submission actually at the end of July.
So Tom, I know this, I know the town board is lead agency and the planning board is just considering, not just, but we're considering the site plan and subdivision, so can you just quickly walk us through procedurally?
Oh, sure.
What will happen over the next.
Basically, the applicant, if they had the public hearing, those comments could be utilized to, by the town board to address the finalization of the CECL process, which obviously you can't give approval until the town board has not only finished amending the zoning ordinance, but adopted the NECDAC. They have not adopted a NECDAC yet because they wanted, it has to include any site issues, so it probably would help the process if there was a public hearing to get the comments on the site, water, whatever we're going to hear, to make sure that that could then be adequately addressed by the town board's lead agency.
Chris, have you got your flow determination yet back from Port of Health?
Do they have the whole public hearing too?
Do they have the whole public hearing too?
Yeah.
Yeah, the town, that's why I wanted Tom to walk us through, just walk us through with the town board.
The town board has already held its public hearing on the legislation, uh, but they can't adopt the legislation until theirs CQ is complied with.
So, give a projection, what do you think the Board of Health's gonna...
So it's kind of catch 22. So they can't finish CQ until they know that they've covered all the issues that might come up during the site plan subdivision process.
So, so we originally asked, should we have a joint public hearing? But we thought we would have initially the site plan and subdivision public hearing by the planning board.
But the, no, town board's already had the legislative public hearing. There's no, this special permit, if it's enacted, is gonna be a special permit that will be granted, um, by the planning boards of the future. Right now, the town board will have to adopt the legislation, so they've elected to be lead agency, but the, the CQ process includes both the site plan and subdivision as well as the amendment of the zoning ordinance.
Um, Chris, I know that you were revising some of the EAF and you'll be recently in that as well, as well.
We originally said that was gonna happen, it sounds like that's not...
Not gonna happen. So we're not having a joint public hearing?
And then, would you be able to just walk?
That was never talked about in this one. We had a joint public hearing in the, the only time we had the joint public hearing, if we go back to the workforce housing, is because we were amending the zoning ordinance and you had a project, and also with the workforce housing, the town board has the grant...
But they weren't lead agency then, right? They weren't a lead agency then.
No, you were lead agency.
We were.
Yes. But the town board held their legislative public hearing concurrently with your site plan public hearing. You adopted a negative declaration, the town board enacted the law, then the applicants went away. Had they stayed, then the process would have moved almost what we're doing now with the workforce one, where there's back and forth between the two boards, but there's not, they can theoretically hold concurrent public hearings, but that, that wasn't the plan.
Okay. I guess I, I thought there needed to be the public hearing for the, I thought it was a special permit, but maybe it's, maybe I just...
Well, it's the legislation, which the town board held, they had public hearing, they advertised it, they held the public hearing, they closed the public hearing, they could not enact the, the zoning change until the CQ process was finished.
So we're gonna hear all the same things that they heard.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna hear all the same things that they probably heard.
Uh, actually, there was very little comment.
Okay.
But your, but you see, your comments, your comments are site-specific issues. The town board's legislative public hearing was, it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which could be applicable on other sites in the town. So, but as far as CQ is concerned, in order for CQ to cover both the legislation and the site, you have to have the, the comments on the site.
Okay.
Okay.
And the subdivision.
And the subdivision.
Brendan, do we have everything we need from a traffic perspective to hold a public hearing?
Traffic study's complete.
Okay. Michelle?
Um, I just have one question, um, and I know that you're addressing this as part of the revisions to the EAF. I just wanted a better understanding of how, when folks are parking in the other 500 spaces, how they get over to the site. I just was, can you...
Yeah, I'll maybe bring that to you.
Yeah.
Is there any thought of any kind of shuttle service on weekends and stuff like that?
Been talking about, the comments are pleased.
In the winter, when it's, you know, 10 degrees out and that kind of thing? Or pour and rain, or it's pour and rain?
We're gonna have to deal with it later at weekends, so I don't know.
Buy, buy a van and... Or monorail, you could, you know, they got those pedestals out there, you might retrofit those.
Do they just have a problem with them?
Yeah.
Brendan, did you see Duchess County's comments?
I did, I did look at them, yeah.
Here, here's where the additional off-site parking area is, over here. And we have a sidewalk that comes across our parking aisles, crosswalk, and then routes to individuals to the front of the building.
Okay, so they have to walk around the side?
They have to walk around the side.
But that's, that just represents a small amount of the off-site though, right?
Correct. That's, I gotta do a side by side.
Okay.
Because I don't have the full, full one.
Okay, sorry.
Someone was speaking, we have the additional parking here, and we have sidewalk that runs up along the side of the building into the front here.
Where are buses gonna be stored, parked?
So they would unload...
There's a bus storage area on the western portion of the site, uh, along the access drive.
Make sure we have...
And is there, and you said you have an unloading zone at the front door for them to just...
Yes.
And so can the bus, is, is the bus easily making it around the loop there?
Buses can circulate here and around, and there's a kind of staging area here for them.
Okay.
I know the county's also asking for attractive bus, bus shelter.
A what?
Attractive bus shelter.
Well, I think we're talking two different things. He's talking about buses that might come in with groups of people, you're talking about the public bus system. The public, the loop.
The loop bus.
Right, there's a suggestion that you should see if you can make your location a stop on the public transportation loop bus.
That's right.
Yeah. Um, they give you the route information, everything the county's letter, so.
And then, Chris, do you know, um, what the lighting or what the parking, existing parking lot and your overflow parking, do they have lights there currently now, or is it all lit and...
Lights there now.
They could explain it, I must know.
They need to, uh...
And then the county wants to reactivate the lighting.
Yeah.
Explore the need and...
To provide adequate lighting for parking lots.
Okay. Okay, so does that, is that something you will be doing, or is...
Yes, we're responsible for pavement, uh, coverage and parking lots.
Okay.
And snow removal, I imagine, right?
Yes, we have an agreement to move all the snow.
And you're gonna have parking attendants at all, or are there any events?
Yeah, when it's, when it's overflow parking use, yeah, you have, yeah.
Larger events that aren't specifically sports-related, you're coming to the town for a special permit anyway on an event-by-event basis, so I would assume Scott, at that time, we, any parking requirement as far as attendance and that sort of thing would be...
Plus, they have to issue a separate traffic control plan under a special permit.
Right, okay.
Does a tournament rise to that level?
No. You know, part of it's got...
Because that's a currently expected use, I think, from the, from the way the application is written, so.
Right, we're talking about, you know, concert, game uses, that kind of over 1,000.
Any of those would be your special permit.
Absolutely.
So Brendan, does that change anything with regard to the traffic?
Well, I'm just thinking on the, you know, on the, on the traffic analysis.
It's gonna be a lot.
I mean, I, I didn't, you know, based on the, you know, the way it was described, I don't, I don't see where the overflow parking's gonna really come into play unless there's an event. Because even with the tournaments, you know, and I know this question was asked too, I mean, there's, there's turnover, people aren't there all day long.
Correct, there, there's turnover, but there's people waiting while people are still playing, so there's the potential...
Well, I think that's accounted for, it's, but it's not, you know, it's not, it's not four groups of people, it's still just like two groups of people.
What was the change in the occupancy that you mentioned earlier?
You know, there, there are, let me go through this real quick, I've got the rates with me. There are the potential for there to be maximum of up to 500,000 total occupants on the site. If you have people playing, you have people waiting to play, you have spectators watching the, the games that are taking place, and you've got spectators waiting for the next game, and then you've got, you know, up to 100 employees.
So that's just a snapshot in time?
That's a snapshot in time.
That's not the rollover during the course of a day, that's a snapshot in time.
That's a snap, you're correct.
Is there a specific area designated for your employee parking? So they're not parking next to the doors?
I'm sure there will be...
The 200 spaces will cover that.
Okay.
200 spaces will cover.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I'll, maybe we can show that again, we can just reconfirm that. I just want to make sure that we can answer those questions for the public hearing.
The employee is, is still gonna be on the side, or are you gonna put the employee further away?
I think the intent would be put the employees further away, so that your more parking will accommodate your patrons.
Right. But I say further away, not even necessarily right on the side, it might be further back.
I'm thinking maybe further back there.
Yeah, right, right.
If, if the board was likely, we can call out employee parking.
Yes.
We typically ask for that, just because that way, everybody kind of has a sense of where that'll be.
And what are we talking about, 100 employees?
The maximum at any, maximum of any, like a point in time, they could have up to 100 employees.
Typical day, what?
Probably half.
Half that, right.
They said on average, 80, uh, but they can have up to 100 employees.
Okay. And that, would that include all of the retail space as well? Because I think you guys weren't gonna run all the retail space, right?
That would include all the retail space, uh, that would include when the, both the indoor games and the outdoor games are ongoing.
But the referees are not the referees?
Yes, that includes everybody.
Okay. Okay. In the, in the, I'm sorry, I'm gonna...
If there's...
In the main field setup or in the most intensive use field setup? So remember you said you could switch out, you could have different field layouts, and some of them had more fields going at one time?
Correct.
Do you mean the most intensive field usage is maxed out at 100 employees?
That's, and from the most intensive, uh, field is both when the indoor and outdoor events are ongoing at the same time.
And configuration of the indoor field that would come with that.
And that's the employees under the dome as opposed to the ones outside, maybe parking or whatever?
No, that's, that's everybody, 100 is the maximum number.
Including parking attendants, oh, okay.
I don't know about parking, except that I'm not sure we included the parking.
Well, they'll be outside, so they're, I mean, yeah.
I think so.
Brendan, the, just walk us through the, the primary access points one more, because I know there had been some talk about connecting into Lime Kiln, there's talk about Auditorium Drive, where, where are we right now exactly?
Right, right now, the traffic study, we looked at just what's out there right now, and that's, you know, the south drive that comes opposite, uh, Rattell and Auditorium, which is here, and Auditorium Drive, which comes out. Um, not a modi, not a modification to this alignment at all, uh, I mean, the, the, not the applicant, but the town is, you know, continuing to pursue the connection of this west campus to Lime Kiln along South Drive.
Right.
So, I mean, that certainly, uh...
But that's a future potential, it's not gonna be day one?
And it's not, it's not, potentially it's not gonna be day one, it could be, but it, you know, right now it's not.
But, but we have to look at it for what we, what could be right now, right? So, okay.
And so when you try, you know, when we analyze the traffic, first we have to sort of, uh, look at distributing it, and, you know, since it's a regional facility, we're probably gonna get a, a big draw from 84. So I, I think if, I remember the numbers correctly, it was 50% of the traffic was gonna come from that 84 corridor.
So they'll probably come in Lime Kiln, you think, and head west?
Can they come in the backside?
On 52?
They cannot. I mean, not right now, not under, my understanding of...
Physically, the road exists, but there's no access right now.
It's gated.
It's gated. Why is it gated?
Gated, IBM has it gated for security.
That's always supposed to be open.
It is, and we're working on it with them, and it should be resolved shortly.
Okay.
Okay.
But, you know, under the configuration that's proposed, it, it does, it does function, I mean, the, the trouble spots are their own driveway, their own driveway operates at a level of service F. Um, Lake Drive, that condition, the, if, the, as, uh, you know, the, the existing condition, it approaches an F, uh, if you look at the no build condition, it is an F on Lake Drive, you know, in the future, uh, they're gonna worsen that level of service a little bit. And then the other intersection that exhibits some trouble is, uh, is 52 and Lime, Lime Kiln. Um, that, that may be able to be re-timed to actually solve some of those issues, because right now the timing is set up such that, you know, it, it doesn't incorporate this. Preliminary discussion with the people at DOT, they would like to see how this unfolds and how it actually is gonna influence the peaks before they would recommend any changes to that signal.
Okay. But the Lime Kiln side of that light is very quick.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And, and what you're gonna get from this site is a lot of left turn demand.
Right.
So, uh, you know, that left turn demand is what has a, it's exhibiting a pretty poor level of service, so that's, uh, something that could be fixed if, if the signal was optimized.
Okay.
Brendan, you say the main entrance is an F?
The main entrance is an F, that's seven...
And that's, that's exiting or entering or both?
Not entering, just exiting. Just exiting and the left turn movement out, out at, at Rattell.
And what about coming out at Rattell? From Lake City?
Well, is that, is there a light right there?
I can't remember the exact numbers, but I don't, I don't think, it doesn't change drastically.
Doesn't change.
Yeah, from, uh, you know, from the existing no build.
Yeah.
But there is mitigation in place.
Is that light supposed to be reactivated?
Well, this is, uh, you know, we've had this discussion actually with, with the DOT from the, from, uh, the, the gas station project, and basically the answer the DOT gave us is when this, when this intersection meets the warrants, you know, then, then application you made to turn it back on. Um, I think as part of this process, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna recommend that it gets put to the DOT, and we ask that question regardless of what the warrants are, you know, just based on the magnitude of the development and the past history here, we should recommend that it goes back on, but that's, again, the, the kind of preliminary answer they gave us was not until we see some more development here, but, you know, I mean, they, you know, that, they could be, you know, maybe they could be persuaded otherwise.
Well, what may, what may put us over the hump though is if that road's open to Lime Kiln, ultimately, and now people are using that as a cut-through gate for, that'll bump the numbers up and then light them.
I mean, this is, this is something the DOT was very interested in, if, if that actually become a public road from 52 to Lime Kiln, then you're gonna see a lot of, you know, then traffic would divert and not go up through, past Palan Road and Lime Kiln.
Right.
So they would, they would flip the switch on then, for sure.
So when the gas station project was reviewed, was this project part of the future traffic corridor?
Yes, maybe not exactly precisely, yes, we included it, uh, but, you know, based on...
But you, but your, your peak usage hours were a little different than I think what we saw for the gas station, just to be fair as far as...
Their, their biggest issues were in the AM.
With the high school being right across the street.
So...
Yeah. Okay.
And so even that, then the DOT didn't feel there's more of the deactivation of the signal?
No.
You know, basically they said this was, that signal was part of the mitigation for 1.2 million square feet of, of, you know, office industrial space, and, you know, that met the warrant, but with this development, I mean, it's only that warrant, actually it, it doesn't demonstrate to meet the...
It's, there, there's no precedent to have the ability to have it set up where you could say it's an event, so we're gonna turn the light on for 24 hours or 12 hours or so we're gonna turn the light on for 24 hours or 12 hours or something like that? There's, there's no way to have it, you know, generally flash yellow, but-
Just my experience, and even, we asked that question about the, the school light.
Yeah.
And, you know, they, they basically indicated that they don't like to do that anymore. In any, on state signals, they like them to run. You know, they might, they might adjust the timing throughout the course of the day, but they, you know, computer-driven, but they're not, they're not gonna put signals on flashing. It's not, it's not a DOT practice to put signals on flashing or activate them and deactivate them.
Okay. I mean, it's too bad, because technology, I mean, you should be able to do that, right? And ideally, we should be able to accommodate high traffic volumes at one time or another.
Yeah. You have to do it from your smartphone.
No kidding? No, I'm serious, is there, you know?
Well, one, I mean, one thing, I mean, that, the signal's been out of use for a little while, and it was constructed some time ago. So, I mean, actually bringing it back on board would require probably some upgrading.
Okay.
That's one thing. And then, you know, if they bring, you know, when, when it gets to the point of being brought back on board, I think they're gonna bring it back on board.
There's a signal also on Limekill.
But again, we're gonna be looking for potentially a fair share contribution for-
I was just gonna say that, Scott, yeah.
To be set aside.
Because I think we have to prepare for that, at some point, we're gonna need that signal again.
Yeah, well, right, right now, yeah, right now, my office is in the process of trying to come up with some, like, engineering estimates of, of improvements in the corridor. And then we're gonna, we're gonna look for a way to distribute that amongst, you know, the developers in that corridor.
Is there a good chance that that back road can become a town road?
Sorry?
Is there a good chance that that back road can become a town road?
Yes, that's what we're working on.
And there's a light on the other end of that, on Limekill?
Yes.
That's deactivated also, right?
I don't think it's on.
That light's activated.
No, it's on.
That light's on, because IBM uses it.
No, on the back road I'm talking about.
Yeah.
At Limekill, there's a light.
I thought that's-
Oh, no, you're talking about the intersection there.
The, the one before.
Not internally, but at Limekill, there is a light, but not internally.
There's no longer a light at, at the other intersection.
At the other intersection.
There's another, there's, there's at least one more bag, right?
But I think you're talking between the West Campus and the East Campus.
I'm talking about the back road and Limekill meeting, is there a light there?
At Limekill, there's a light, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a signalized intersection.
Yeah.
No, not Limekill 52, I'm talking with IBM.
Yeah.
Lime, Limekill.
Cused right now. Yeah, so IBM uses it, yeah.
No, he's not talking about Limekill.
He just said at Limekill.
Okay, that's the road at the, that's the light at the right-
There's another, that's Entrance 5, I think.
Okay.
Entrance 5 has a signal, it's, it's active.
I wasn't sure which one of all of them.
I tried across from Old Limekill.
Yeah.
It's light, that's all right.
And there's another one, I think at Gate 3, that's active, and I think there's another one, that's bad.
Okay. Michelle, anything that we need for public hearing? So we have to have it in the office for 15 days prior?
I did wanna make a comment that it's, you know, once everything's completely, we need to look at the landscaping carefully to make sure, once we know, we've seen the changes that are made to the plan, we need to take a look at the overall landscaping for the site. And then, did you get the comments from Dutchess County? Have you seen them yet? They just came on the 10th. All right, I'll get you a copy of that.
Yeah, there's, that, again, and there is also the bus hooking into the loop system and some other comments that-
It's actually a pretty good idea.
Joe, anything that we need before public hearing?
Yes, since the stormwater is a primary item, I think if Chris, myself, and Steve can have a, you know, meeting in the minds when, when they have their swit together, you know, maybe even before it's submitted.
If you're looking at the Ponzo, you probably won't be finished right before-
We're gonna, we're, we're not gonna have everything finished by next Friday, first of the town.
Okay.
So the sooner we can get that stormwater information, the better I think it'll be to have reviewed it and, you know, look at what else might be necessary and at least be on the same page when it comes to, because we know we're gonna get, you know, bombarded by the public, so.
Yeah, I mean, Scott was great. Scott, you know, he's been taking some comments from the public already and conveying it to us from what he's hearing, and he's been sharing that with us, so, you know. The applicant has heard the message loud and clear that they understand drainage is an issue. And, you know, although they may be meeting the DC's requirements, the volume coming off site is a major concern.
I, I think when you, and I'm not sure what you did for the town board, but I think when you open, when we open the public hearing, I would wanna make sure that you're giving not just an overview of the project and what will be there, but talk about traffic, talk about drainage, talk about some of that stuff, just in your kind of opening comments, so that we understand where you are, if there's things that are still waiting to come, if there's things, you know, that you're, that you're working on or have already settled. I think it's important to walk through that.
Okay.
In, you know, you don't have to get real technical, but just to, just to give everybody a sense of, you know, kind of how the design has changed over time as you've accommodated some of the comments that have already been provided to you.
Okay.
Joe, anything else before we set a public hearing?
The stormwater's the main thing. I did put together a short list of a few other things for them to consider as they do this next round. I'll have to get a copy of my July 11th letter to Chris and Steve, or do you have it?
I've got your, we got your comments, that's what we're gonna be working off of. And your June 3rd memo as well.
Scott, anything else you're looking to see prior to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing, Lloyd, did, did you guys look at Sidewalk on the other, up to Rockell?
And the, and a crosswalk?
Yeah, well, because-
Across 52?
If that becomes the signal, that's gonna be, you know, a, a place, you know, again, DOT's not, you know, they're not too apt to give mid-block crossings. So, you know, if that ends up being a signal that gets turned on somewhere in the future, that's gonna be a place where we want to cross pedestrians. So I don't know whether it could be proposed or-
It won't be up at the bank, but Ortho Associates would pick up Sidewalk at their property, get all the pass theirs to get down to, I think the spot is the next one over.
Keep building the links, yeah.
Just keep building the links, yeah.
Right. Okay.
And keep in mind, we have our soccer complex right on the other side too, so.
Right, so we need Sidewalk going both ways?
As time goes on, how they, how those two might-
Yeah.
Fair enough.
You know, some, 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 if that pedestrian route can, can head out, especially, you know, I don't know, you know, even the, the loop bus thing, where's that gonna wanna stop?
Well, yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to talk to them and figure out where the bus shelter should go if you, if you do that, but. Okay. Chris, you said August 19th, that gives you a very short period of time to do advertising to get your updated plans into the office?
Yeah, that's, uh, that gives us, I think, enough time to do everything we need to do on our end.
25 days prior, you have to be, you have to notice your neighborhood property owners, okay. All right, unless there's any other questions, do I have a motion to put the Hope Bell Sports Dome site plan on, for a public hearing on August 19th? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Also the subdivision as well?
Could we just-
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say site, site plan and subdivision? I wrote the right thing.
And can we just resolve the signage issues, that they'll have to erect a two-sided sign, and I would imagine maybe four by eight?
Out by Route 52.
By Route 52 sided property instead of putting a bunch of little signs, just due to-
Thank you, Tom.
You know, a two-sided sign like a V, that people traveling either way can see it without running off the road to-
No, that's-
Four by eight, you said, okay.
Well, four by eight, four by six, whatever.
Probably at the Rockell entrance, I would imagine, somewhere, somewhere around there.
Did we amend the motion, site plan and subdivision, public hearing, August 19th? Approved as amended?
I'd say somewhere, we're close to the room, yeah.
But easily visible by car, traffic going either way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, unless there's anything else for the agenda tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys.